Are we live now?
I believe we are.
Yes, guys gotta give us some kind of cue. So yeah, we know. Okay, we are live, so I want to call this meeting to order. This is the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, regular meeting of the West Contra Costa USD Board of Education. We're moving on to item A two, which is disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. The first item is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. The second item is conference with labor negotiators. The third item is public employee discipline dismissal release complaint. And the fourth item is public employee performance evaluation. Mister Duffy, do we have any public comment?
Yes, it looks like we have one public comment. Catherine Angberg, you may unmute and begin.
Yes, thank you, Mister Duffy and members of the board. My name is Catherine Angberg. I'm a parent of a fifth grader and eighth grader in the district. I am also a member of the West Contra Costa Safe Open Schools Group SOS. I'm here to give comment on the labor negotiations item and really to, you know, urge the board to direct your labor negotiator to revisit the MOU so that it is based on current science and public health guidance. I'm sure, as you know, today, the county met states thresholds to allow K through six to open in person with approved safety plans. Other schools are moving forward with those plans and are reopening. And I just am here tonight to urge you to make, do your, do your best, I know you are, to make sure that West Contra Costa Unified Schools don't fall further behind. My daughter asked me to speak to you tonight to ask that you renegotiate the MOU so the kids could come back after February break. I told her I needed to need to manage your expectations, but I, but I would do my part to speak with you this evening. Thank you for all your hard work. I know that it is incredible how hard work and that, you know, you have to maintain trust with the teachers who are also doing an amazing job with distance learning and working to get back in the classroom. And thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you very much for your comment, ma'am. We are now going to adjourn into closed session and we will be back out, I believe at six thirty. So thank you, everyone, and we'll see you soon. Guys, for item B one, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to move on to item B two, which is the land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chachinio, Mawikma, Karken, Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. I would like to welcome everyone to the February tenth meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Board of Education, the mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thinking, contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect, provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate. Serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded, lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society. Take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community. Provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating. Respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the members' own personal interest. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if assessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, you, your hand must be raised before public comment begins for the item. Please note that public comment will be restricted to the time allotted by the board president. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. If you do need translation for this meeting, you can access that by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of your screen and then picking the language that you need. So that is the welcome. Again, thank you, everyone, for tuning in today. We're going to move on to item B four, which is the roll call. Mister Duffy, please.
President Phillips.
Here.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Here.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm here.
Trustee Christian.
Here.
And it is my pleasure to introduce two new student trustees this evening, who we will get to hear from later. Thomas Leung, so I'm actually roll calling you, Thomas. So he is here, and we also have Navi Emiliano. She is here as well.
Here.
Welcome to both of you, and we'll get a chance to introduce you and hear more about you and from you a little bit later. So welcome to our new student trustees.
Thank you so much, Mister Duffy. We are now going to move to item B five, which is report ratification of closed session. Mister Duffy, do you have anything you need to report out?
No, there's nothing to report out this evening.
Thank you very much, sir. We are now going to move on to item B six, which is presentation of student board representatives for the second semester of two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes, and as I just mentioned, I would like to formally introduce Thomas Leung and Navi Emiliano, who were selected by their fellow students. We received a number of excellent applications, and we left it to the students to determine who would best represent them. And through our All Student Congress Youth Commission that we're working to develop more fully, they were chosen. And so I'm really proud that they're here with us, and I'm going to ask each one of them to share a few words about themselves. And then every other board meeting, we're going to get to hear their report along with the other committee reports. So we don't have those reports scheduled for tonight. So their first report will be the next meeting. But I am going to ask them to share a little bit about who they are and why they're here. So.
So Mister Duffy, we're going to follow, they're going to get to do that. We're just going to follow the normal order. There may be people who want to do public comment for them and whatnot. So, but they will, I promise, it's only two seconds. Are, are there any questions that any board members have? Okay, great, seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item?
I see one hand, Stephanie Garcia Avila.
All right, and I know she's going to talk about the students, so public comment, please.
All right.
Stephanie.
Stephanie, you can.
Very, okay, there you go, cool. Congratulations, it's so nice to see students back on Zoom. And if y'all need mentorship or whatever, please feel free to reach out to me. My email is stephgarcia122@gmail.com. And yeah, congratulations to both of you.
And we do have one other hand raised.
That's fine.
Faraz Hidari, you may unmute.
Good evening, board trustees. This is a former teacher of Thomas Leung's from Linda Elementary, who is now a proud principal at Grant. I just wanted to congratulate both student trustees. Congratulations, my student leaders came back and they said, do you know these names? And I said, well, I knew, I know at least one of the names. And that alone, that relationship piece, created such a nice dialogue between my student leaders at Grant and myself. And they look forward to their next meeting because now they feel a kinship and how they are internalizing that them being leaders at the elementary school could mean that someday they could be sitting in your seat. So thank you very much, and I really am appreciative of the opportunity for our young youth, who are the leaders of the future.
And that is all the hands that are raised.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're muted, Mister Phillips, you went mute.
You know, I think I actually muted myself before I started to talk. But now we're going to move to board discussion, and this is the part where the board members have an opportunity to welcome the new student trustees, and they have an opportunity to say, you know, say a piece. So we're going to start by welcoming them, and we're doing this in reverse trustee area order this evening, so trustee Reckler, you're first.
Great, thanks so much, and welcome to our two new student trustees. I've missed having trustees over these past few weeks, and so I'm so glad you're here to add your thoughts. Be honest with us, lay it all out there, you can do it. And I also want to work with you and mentor you as well. So I'll, I, you know, I'm new board trustee too, and I'm not even sure how to do that. So I'll be working with the superintendent to pass my contact information to you and figure out how we can work together, because I'd love to do that, and welcome, thank you.
And next is Mister Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Phillips, and welcome, student trustees. I am also equally excited you're here. In my opinion, you are the most important voice up here. And, you know, when I was in the public, I used to always think that the student voice was always the most important, critical, and empathetic. So I hope you'll continue on, you know, being real and courageous with us as we all make decisions. Your voice is just critical so that we ensure that we're always listening to students. I'm just excited you're here, and I'm excited to hear about your journey and the feedback you can give us. So thank you, thank you for being here and representing all students in WZUSD.
Thank you, good sir, Mister Christian.
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. I want to say welcome to Navia and Thomas. Your voices will bring flavor to the board, and you are leaders, and you have what it takes to be the best that you can be. So learn as much as you can, and I'm here to offer and share the things that, you know, from the community and so forth. So I'm here, so welcome.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smith Folds.
So I have a whole lot to say, but I'm not going to do it because if I did, Mister Phillips said I won't get my break, and I need to have a break during the meeting. So I just want to say hi to Navi, and I, full disclosure, I know Navi, know Navi for years, and she's great. So get your pencil ready because she's going to drop some real truth bombs on you because that's just who she is, she's a real solid soul. Thomas, I looked at your video, it was great, your video that you submitted, so I'm excited to hear from you. And all these people have told you that they're here to help you. I'm no exception. I'm probably going to be asking you for help, it is what it is. So I just want to let you know, welcome, and just take a deep breath, be you, take a deep breath and just enjoy the ride, it's just part of, it's part of it. So congratulations, and here we go. And I'm so proud of you, Navi, I'm so proud, I'm proud, very proud of you. That's it, I'm done, President Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to welcome Miss Emiliano. Thomas, how do you say your last name, so I said it right?
Leung.
Leung, okay, so I want to welcome Miss Emiliano and Mister Leung. It is a pleasure to have you here. This is a great opportunity for you to kind of look behind the curtain and see how things operate in a system like this. Please take every opportunity to learn. I think that this is something that can really impact you, frankly, for the rest of your life. So please, this is, it's a pleasure to have you here, please participate. This year, you will have, everyone on the board is great. Everyone is going to offer to, to, to help and to work with you and feel comfortable reaching out to board members. You are going to have an assigned person this year, which is a little different from what we've had in the past. So Mister Christian, he is the board advisor for the Youth Commission, the Congress, and you. So you guys can look to him, you know, kind of as a, as a mentor, and he will get with you and give you his contact information. Doesn't mean you can't talk to other board members, but we just want to make sure that you're not kind of floating out there. We want to make sure that we're supporting you, okay? But that said, welcome, and we are going to do ladies first. So Miss Emiliano, if you have anything that you would like to say to everyone, this is your opportunity.
Um, so hello, we actually were required to write an introduction, so I'm just going to read that. So, hi, my name is Navi Emiliano, and I'm currently a junior at Hercules High School. Growing up, my mom has always encouraged me to venture out and try new things. And an example of this is when I was three, my mom pressured me into making friends. So I went up to the first girl I could find and said, hi, my name is Navi, and I'm a good friend. That's it, that's all I said to her. Now, we did end up being friends, but that's not the point of me telling you this. So my mom's encouragement for me to try new things has left a lasting impact on who I am. At school, I enjoy participating in a variety of extracurricular activities like volleyball, mock trial, and leadership. Participating in these things has allowed me to connect and work with lots of different people who share my interests as well as have unique perspectives on the world around us. And I'm so excited to work with all of you as a student trustee, and thank you so much for this great opportunity, and I can't wait to learn from all of you.
Thank you very much for those words, and Mister Leung.
Hi, my name is Thomas Leung, and I'm a senior at middle college, high school. And I've had the privilege of experiencing both a high school and college lifestyle at middle college, which allowed me to interact with many different minded peers of all races, ages, and genders, which has really developed my, my views of the world and pushed me to explore and, and, and see more of the world. And throughout my high school journey, I've been an active teaching assistant to many different math professors at Contra Costa College, which has allowed me to develop my, my leadership skills and interacting with, with different peers. And through these experiences, I've learned that education is truly the foundation to success, and that student voice is extremely important. And I, I, I pursue to voice their concerns and make sure that they're all heard and understood. And I'm extremely grateful for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, and again, the board welcomes you and the superintendent welcomes you, and we, we look forward to working with you. All right, so we are going to move on to item C seven, which is agenda review and adoption. We're going to do this a little differently this time. Mister Duffy, can you present the consent items?
Yes, I can, one second. Sorry about that. The consent items this evening are grants, awards, and agreement, acceptance of donations, summary of payroll and vendor warrant reports, adoption of resolution number five seven dash two thousand and twenty-one, replacement of outdated warrant, approve the contract with school services of California for Facilitron services in regard to district properties, approve new communications assistant job description, approve the MOU with Teach for America, award the contract to District Nutrition Center Walk for District Nutrition Center Walk-in Freezer and Cooler Replacement.
Thank you.
Items.
Thank you so much, Mister Duffy. I could see, you know, all of the board members right now. Do any board members have any questions about anything that's on consent? Miss Reckler.
I'd like to pull C five, please, approve contract with school services for California, of California for facilitation services in regard to district properties.
Okay, so do any other board members have any questions about anything on consent? Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Smith Folds.
I would like to remove C seven and have it come back.
Okay. Do any other board members have any questions about anything on consent? Okay, Mister Duffy or Mister Aurelio, can we have a public comment?
Yes, there is one hand raised, Mike.
Sorry, can I ask a clarification? When we, we had this discussion earlier, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. Pull means we are not discussing it this evening at all, or pull means it's not to be approved with the consent calendar, and it will be discussed later.
So when we, I see you, Mrs. Reckler, so when we get to the, I'm going to come back to everybody, we're on public comment right now. So the person who was public comment can, and I'm going to double back for all of you. And when we get ready to do the motion, I will restate the motion, so it is clear what we're doing. But public comment is where we are. So Mister Aurelio.
Sure, Mike Parrots, you can unmute and begin your comment. Mike Parrots. Okay, I am going to, doesn't seem like your microphone is working, I'm going to come back to you. Gabriella Micalletti, you can unmute.
Hi, I just wanted to thank trustee Smith Folds and trustee Reckler, and sorry if I missed naming anyone else who was there, but they attended a PD regarding literacy instruction that was put on by Nystrom last week. And I really hope that as we do soul searching as a district into how we treat our black and brown students, that we're also considering the curriculum we employ and really getting into the science behind what we can do to get all our students reading in a timely manner, and through that work, begin the process of shutting down that school-to-prison pipeline. So I really appreciate you taking the time to being there for your engagement in that process, and I hope you're able to share what you learned that day with your colleagues on the school board. Thank you.
There's one more hand raised.
Before the person begins, this is public comment on this item. So if you have general public comment, that will come up very soon. But if you have public comment on this item, that's fine, and it, and this is the time for that.
So hands are down, so we're good.
Okay, thank you so much. So we just had public comment, and we're going to move on to board discussion. I'm going to ask for a motion, and I think that clarifies what we're doing. Okay, so I am asking for a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item five, which we are going to discuss tonight, and minus item number seven, which I am referring to the academic subcommittee. That is the motion, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. And student trustees, this is technically going to be your first vote. So what we're going to do is I'm going to call out the name of basically every board member, and when we get to you, I'm going to call your name, and you're going to vote as well, okay? So we're starting with trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
And Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
And Christian.
Christian, yes.
Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And we will go to Miss Emiliano.
Emiliano, yes.
And Leung.
Leung, yes.
And Phillips, yes, thank you very much. So now what we are going to do is we are going to move on to item D, which is board committee and superintendent communication on this evening. The only report that we have is the superintendent's.
Right, and I'm going to ask Mister Jordan if he could bring that up for us, and then we'll get right into it. Thank you very much. So excited to share a few things going on around the district with you. I think this is, this picture was taken by trustee Gonzalez Hoi, actually, who attended an event I was not able to get to, which is Juan Crespi's exploration of their school name, and they continued to explore together and held an event which featured students looking at their name, and I'm going to talk about that in our next slide. So thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoi, for sharing this picture. We can go to our next slide. So just a couple of notes to share. One, I just want to continue to thank all of our staff. They're incredible. Everybody is working so hard, and I know folks are looking forward to the February break as it's been a long stretch over these last six weeks or so since we've been back. So I just, you know, thank you so much, thank you to the teachers who are doing all the work with the distance learning, all of our support providers, special education staff working incredibly hard to make sure students get what they need through their IEPs, et cetera. You know, our principals, school leaders, front offices, it's registration time, so folks are doing that work. So just a big, big thank you to everybody in our district. Just a reminder, you know, that I do attend the county superintendent's call each week to discuss the return to school and vaccinations and other items. So, you know, I am fully in touch with what's happening across the bay in our county, along with the latest health conditions. Also, we had recently our solutions team meeting where we come together with all of our labor leaders to look at challenges and collectively solve those together. So really appreciating our solutions team and a number of new members there as well. As one of the public speakers said, we actually held two literacy events this week. Were really interesting, Nystrom hosted a science of reading talk about the science of reading, and we also were able to host Lucy Cawkins of the Readers and Writers Workshop, who visited our academic cabinet. And this is really interesting because there are definitely competing in some ways, but also aligned views of the teaching of reading. And it's important for us to understand all sides of that argument and all of the science of reading, as well as sort of the workshop model. So I think we're doing our due diligence to make sure we understand, and I thank Jamie Allardice and his team for putting that together, and then our academic cabinet as well. And then our academic cabinet as well. I mentioned the Crespi, what's in a name. And that's their process that they're going through to look at their name, which is exciting. And then just a reminder that our Kennedy family initiative started many years ago continues. And we have a monthly community of practice through Partners in School Innovation to bring the Kennedy School Leaders and Lead Teams together to really talk about how to improve schools and support our students in the Kennedy family. And then finally, just, you know, making sure everybody does know, we continue to work towards reopening. We're doing our study sessions that we've held with the Board of Education internally. We're prepping our facilities. So the work continues aggressively. Go to our next slide. Upcoming, we have a huge week after vacation. Next week, we have a study session Monday, February twenty-second at six PM on COVID in schools. We have the following Friday, a study and listening session, community listening session on COVID nineteen in schools. We have our next regular board meeting two weeks from today, and we're going to do a focus on summer planning and summer interventions to really let our community know everything that we have planned for the summer. Winter break is next week and just, you know, want to again give well wishes to all of our students and faculty, staff who will get a little bit of a breather next week. Just a reminder, we do have five board committees and they are meeting consistently to do sort of a deeper examination of our work. And so you're seeing our trustees work towards more efficient meetings here at the main meeting and giving much more time for these deeper examination of issues and items through the committees. And then our CPP, our COVID Prevention Plan, which is part of the reopening documents that we will finalize will be coming over the next two weeks as we've shared and really look forward to bringing all the pieces together that we've been working on together in one place. And finally, I have an in memoriam to do, so I'm going to ask trust Mr. Jordan to bring that back up. Thank you so much. So moving into that, we do take the time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who have passed away, and we request the community to submit names as part of a reg- regular part of each agenda. So retiree Lovey Jenkins began work as a childcare worker with the district in nineteen seventy-one, and she retired from the Maritime Child Center in nineteen ninety. Also, El Cerrito High School math instructor and basketball coach Chris Huber worked for the district from nineteen eighty-six to twenty twenty. So our thoughts go out to the family and friends and their loss of their loved ones. We'll take a moment of silence. Thank you. That's all for my report.
President Phillips, I have a point of order.
Wait, I think I know what you're going to say, but go ahead and say it.
The Friday is Friday, February the twenty-sixth, not Friday, February the twenty-fifth. On the slide, it said Friday, February twenty-fifth.
Yes, you are correct.
Thank you for that correction.
Um, what I thought you were going to say is I got a little bit ahead of myself, and we need to back up a little bit. I asked Mr. Duffy to present the consent calendar, and then I went through consent and then went to, and then went to item D, right? So we do actually have to back up some, and so I want to go back to B eight, which is approval of the minutes. So does anyone have any corrections for January twenty-third and January twenty-seven? Okay, so seeing no corrections, can I have a motion to adopt both sets of minutes?
I'll make a motion to adopt both sets of minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded. Onto the vote. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
And Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
And Christian.
Christian, yes.
Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Emiliano.
Emiliano, yes.
And Leon.
Leon, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. The minutes are approved. Next, we're going to move on to B nine, which is Resolution Number fifty-five, twenty twenty-one Honoring African American History Month, February twenty twenty-one. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Smith Folds to read the resolve clause for the resolution.
Now therefore be it resolved that the state, that the State Board of Education, as does the West Country Costa Unified School District Board of Education proclaim the month of February twenty twenty-one as African American History Month and encourages all educational communities to commiserate commemorate, sorry, this occasion with the appropriate instructional activities.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Do any board members have any questions? No, okay. Is there any public comment, Mr. Aurelio?
I do not see any hands raised for this item.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt or pass this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
I just, I have a discussion point.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to let it be known that black history is every day. We just, it's our anniversary in February, but we need to celebrate black history every day and just recognize February as the anniversary month. That's it.
Amen. Any further discussion? Okay, on to the vote. Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
And Christian.
Christian, yes.
Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Emiliano. This will be your time to vote.
Emiliano, yes. Apologies, I couldn't unmute.
You will see, I do that all the time. And Leon.
Leon, yes.
And Phillips, yes. Thank you so much. We are going to move to item B ten, which is Resolution Number fifty-nine, twenty twenty-one, Resolution condemning violence in the US Capitol. And I am going to ask the author of this resolution, which is, or who is Mrs. Reckler, to read the resolve clauses.
Thank you. Therefore be it, be resolved that we condemn in the strongest possible terms the acts of the insurrectionists who invaded the Capitol. We condemn in the strongest possible terms truth decay in local, state, and national politics, and we call for the continued peaceful transition of power free from interference at all levels of government in keeping with our most cherished democratic traditions. We urge and support a robust civics education for all students at all grade levels.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Board members, any questions? All right, seeing none, any public comment, Mr. Aurelio?
I do see a hand raised.
Okay, I want to remind the caller that this is public comment on this particular resolution, but go ahead.
TJ Warfield, you may unmute and begin your comment.
I just wanted to thank trustee Reckler for penning this resolution, and I think it's important that it is recognized and condemned. So thank you very much, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Warfield. Onto board discussion. I'm going to start by asking for a motion to pass this resolution, and I'm asking Mrs. Reckler to make the motion.
Uh, so moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a little scared there. On the discuss, on the discussion, and because this is Mrs. Reckler's resolution, I'm just going to let her, her begin. So doesn't matter, you would have begun anyway because we're doing reverse. So go ahead. It's on you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I could have gone on and on about what to write in this resolution, and I decided just to keep it very simple and to speak to truth. Of course, there are many other parts of this day that, you know, listening today to the hearings were you know, traumatic to say the least. You know, we could have talked about white supremacy, attacks on immigrants, attacks on Jewish people, attacks on African Americans, attacks on immigrant. I mean, it just goes on and on about how unhinged that day was. And so I think, thank you, President Phillips, for edits on this copy, and I appreciate being able to bring this forward and in, you know, in truth and in civics will prevail. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so seeing none, we're going to move to the vote. Mrs. Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Christian.
Christian, yes.
Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Emiliano.
Emiliano, yes.
Leon.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you very much for that resolution. And we're going to move on to B eleven, which is WCCUSD Public Comment. Raise your hand, because it's supposed to be raised, so I'm stalling, so you have time to raise your hand. In the Zoom, you do that by star nine. And that said, we are going to begin public comment. This is general public comment. So if you have something that you want to talk about that's not on the agenda, this is the time that you do that. So, Mr. Aurelio, can you please begin public comment?
Yes, sir. Don Gosney, you can unmute and begin your comment.
Thank you very much. You know, for the record, the CBOC still disagrees with the board's efforts to limit the ability of the volunteers serving on the many district committees to communicate with the public and the board. No matter what excuses proffered, it's seen by the public and the volunteer committee members as an effort by the board to silence the collective voices of these volunteers and the committees they serve on. The Bond Oversight Committee hosted a meeting just two days ago to learn more about the many critical needs projects at the district schools. We understand that after a lengthy absence, the Facilities Committee will be meeting late on Friday afternoon. Personally, I think it's an unwise choice of the board to host these meetings at a time during the workday when working members of the public would either be on their jobs or commuting home from the weekend. And so this seems to go along with what I was speaking about a few minutes, moments ago, where the message being sent by this board is that the involvement by the public is not a high priority of this board. The agenda for this meeting came out yesterday afternoon, and the first thing that members of the CBOC noticed is that the six applications submitted for consideration to serve on the CBOC were absent from the agenda. We understand that there's a lot of business that this committee wants to discuss, but we're disappointed nonetheless. The district will now be out of of compliance, will, and will sit vacant. And that will have fewer members than what Prop thirty-nine requires. We're anxious, however, to listen at the next board meeting where the Facilities Committee will give a full report to the board, public about what's happening with their tax dollars. As we always love watching to see how a two hours meeting full of information is condensed into five minutes or less.
Our next speaker is Asado Wilson. Mr. Wilson, you can unmute.
Good evening, everyone. This is Asado Wilson, educator at Richmond High School for Ethic Studies and Creative Writing, president of the Black Educator Network, and a officer of United Teachers of Richmond, treasurer and high school representative. I just want to take this timeout as during this climate and the pandemic and whatnot. I just want to put a message out there for everyone that is listening and watching right now, for all the parents, for all the board members, for all the, everyone everywhere. Let's remind each other, just please support your teachers because we are actually at home working. Schools are closed, but the building is closed. School is still open. We are still teaching. We are still doing the best that we can to do what we can do over a forum that we were not trained to do when we decided to become teachers. At the same time, we are weathering the storms. We have educators out here that have family issues as well, mental health issues as well, health issues. And at the same time, it's not really positive when you have folks say, get off the couch. If you don't like teaching, get another job. So all I'm asking is for everyone just realize that we are doing what we can to assist, mold, nurture your children out there, and we are still doing to the best of our ability. And we will keep doing it until we decide either we retire or no longer want to do it again. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Giorgio Constantino. You can unmute.
Okay, hello. Let's see, one second here, I'll get my notes. Okay. Hello, Superintendent Duffy, President Phillips, trustees and staff. As a current WCCUSD parent, I want my daughter to return to school as soon as possible. I do not believe the current distant learning situation is a healthy one. I am also observing some examples of where the education process has been seriously compromised, although the successes are many too. As a former WCCUSD high school science teacher and current microbiologist who performs COVID testing on a regular basis in the course of my duties, I want our teachers, school staff, and children to return to a situation that is safe. My laboratory work environment is a controlled one. I have the protection I need to work with many highly infectious COVID samples. Additionally, I have just received the first dose of vaccine. My recollection of the school environment is one that at times is not well controlled. Our district is a challenging one from an infection, infection control standpoint, including communities with a high level of COVID and facilities that are not well ventilated. We have already seen employees across the country who have died as a result of workplace outbreaks, including those in the poultry and meat processing industries. We as a society let those employees and their families down. I want our teachers, staff, and students to know we shall not let them down. I believe schools can be reopened safely, but it will mean a commitment to rigor with respect to safety protocol, the same level of rigor present in my own work environment in a COVID testing laboratory. I am wishing everyone a safe journey during this difficult time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is William McGee.
Good evening, honorable board president, board members, superintendent, community, and staff. I apologize, I did not comment during the resolution, and I appreciate you guys offering and reading the resolution. I was actually at one of our Black History Month events tonight where our youth are participating in financial literacy. So it was pretty cool to see that focus and see some of our children on there. We didn't have a big crowd, but it was good that we put it out there. So I did want to say again, thank you guys for the resolution, and as trustee Smith Folds mentioned, I love it. This is our anniversary month, and we are looking to figure out how to incorporate black studies along with ethnic studies all year. I'm happy that our district is really interested in that and working with the various departments on trying to get that to happen. This is especially important because as you guys may have seen, the news story from that school in Utah that allowed families to opt out of black history is disgusting, and it's disgusting to me and others in the community. But I'm happy that they reversed course, but it's something that should not have happened in the first place. So again, just inviting everyone to our Black History Month celebration. We had our very own Michelle Lemons Rayford from Pinot Valley High School educating us about American Sign Language and black American Sign Language. We have financial literacy, some spoken word. Ivy Winston is doing an event for our community, as well as the ASAT is hosting an HBCU College Fair. So we invite everyone out to attend, and we look forward to seeing you there too, board. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Jose De Leon, you may unmute.
Good evening, Superintendent Duffy, trustees. Once again, I want to echo the voice of support for the teachers and administrators that are continuing to set an example, show up with a curriculum for students and support whatever comes up in planning towards next year. Additionally, also our staff on site, working with the principals, working with the front office, working with the custodians, working with the lunch distribution. It takes a lot of organizing and a lot of hard work to support our community. So more than anything else, as administrators, we're here to support the community and let us know how we can support as we move forward through this school year. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Suleta Hunter. Ms. Hunter, you can unmute and begin your comment.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, honorable board and president. I'm going to
I'm going to give the same delivery I did in OUSD's board meeting. I want to first say that as an educator and parent and chair of the African American Site Advisory Team, I'm here to support OUSD's move towards reparations for Black students. And I ask that those in this community withstand the solidarity to do the same. Education means emancipation. Those are the words of Frederick Douglass. He also said, the more I read, the more I was led to abhor and detest my enslavers. I can regard them in no other light than the band of successful robbers who had left their homes, gone to Africa and stolen us from our homes, and in strange land reduced us to slavery. The truth is, once you learn to read, you will forever be free. It is my belief that as long as the educational practices and institutional racism continue within WCC USD, it's enslaving its communities. As a Black teacher transitioning administration, I'm forced to leave a district that I love because the dominant culture controls Black students' freedoms through literacy and special education and is not challenged as it should be. I want to also ask that you take the MOU for Teach for America off of the consent items. I read the data you offered, but as an educator who's been in programs with former Teach for America participants, I know that it's slated towards being a savior and not being a help to Black communities. And I want to also ask that we reevaluate that and look at teachers who look like us.
Our next speaker is TJ Warfield.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that if any board members were thinking along the lines of needing to renegotiate the MOU for this school year to please stop and focus on the next school year. The last study session, they pointed out that only fifty percent of those that say they will go back in person actually go back in person. And to date with all of the updates, we've only heard about efforts in facilities. So so far, the district doesn't have a plan. They haven't built back that trust yet. The facilities aren't ready and we haven't heard a peep about how that split of in-person and virtual learning is going to work for the students, for the teachers. So to please not waste any district resources that are so short and precious on trying to renegotiate the existing deal, but focus on next fiscal year and get us back safely next year. Thank you.
Those are the hands that were raised during public comment, so that would conclude public comment.
Thank you very much, sir. So now we would really be on the consent approval, but we already did that because I jumped ahead. And we, so we've done C, we've done D, that brings us appropriately to E. And so the first item for E is E one, distance learning, part two, concerns and challenges. So presentation, I think this is Mr. Aurelio, please, Mr. Aurelio, take your time and walk us through this.
Good evening, everyone. President Phillips, trustees, Superintendent Duffy, staff and community. My name is Ruben Aurelio. I am the Chief Academic Officer, Associate Superintendent. And this evening, I'm going to walk us through sort of part two of our distance learning presentation. Back in January, we, we were here presenting sort of part one, speaking about the many things we have accomplished this year. We were able to showcase a couple of our school sites and the work they've done, both at De Enza and Chavez. And we also were able to bring in some of our special educators, speaking to the different elements they have been working on during their school year. Tonight's presentation is a little different. Tonight, we are going to be really looking at taking a dive into some of the challenges we are facing under the current conditions and education. You can see from the agenda, we, we split the challenges up into a couple of categories, digital divide, engagement, teaching and learning, social emotional health. And then we pulled out of that some special populations that we also want to highlight. First off, I do want to say thank you to everybody, every single person, our staff, our students, our families, teachers, administrators, everyone has been working so hard to make this year special here that it is function for everyone. So I just really want to let acknowledge the fact that we all are working tremendously hard. I don't think I've ever worked this hard in education in my life. The endless hours that our teachers, our administrators are putting into quality programming. So first off, I want to talk about the digital divide. We had to pivot very quickly last spring and take everything online. And as some of the comments earlier, I think Asato Wilson mentioned, no, we were not trained to deliver education this way. This was not the norm. And we also had to make sure that all twenty-eight thousand of our students, twenty-eight thousand plus, were able to get online. So in checking in with school sites, checking in with our administrators, some of the things, the trends that I heard pretty clearly are that, you know, we've had some challenges with our access to internet. We've tried to mitigate that. We've, I want to say distributed and Tracy Logan to speak to exact number, but a significant number of hotspots to our students and families to try to encourage, to get everyone access to be online. But even with those mitigation factors, they do fail. We have found that in some of our apartment complexes, for example, that the connections are really weak. And that's been really challenging. So that results in missed class time. Our teachers have tried to mitigate that by recording their lessons and making lessons available so, so students can access, access those lessons after the synchronous time. Another factor that plays into it, I mean, we're talking about kids here, devices break and Chromebooks break. And so we have done a tremendous amount of work to try to replace those devices, so there isn't significant downtime. But we know that there are limits to that. There are limits to how many, how fast we can turn devices around. Sites have done a tremendous job of trying to swap devices as soon as they hear one is down. But that's, that also is a potential for loss of instructional time. One of the third areas that was actually, that came up is just like us teachers and administrators, you know, we were thrust into this new environment of digital learning. Our families, the, their level of technology literacy and support is varied across our whole school district. So our family members who aren't able to necessarily support their children with the technology, they're learning just like their children are learning. And that is really challenging. And so we've, we've, in our schedule, for example, we've mitigated some of that work by making sure we have family hour where parents can ask questions. I know that the school scows that at the sites that have scows have really done a lot of outreach to try to support those families and we're always looking to provide additional support around that literacy. We've also found that in households that have different age students, a lot of times their older students are the ones having to support the younger students with the technology needs. But what that does, it limits their time on, in class as well. So those are just some of the areas around the digital divide. Later, when you get to questions, Tracy Logan will be with us to answer any specific questions about that. I want to just move to student engagement. And one of the things I heard pretty loud and clearly, that's been a significant challenge in ensuring that students stay engaged. One of the big ones is cameras. So we do not mandate cameras on in this district. It is something that is a choice of a student to have their camera on. And we know when a teacher is teaching to a lot of blank screens, engagement is hard to measure. It's hard to, to, to gauge if that student's connected. We also have the reality that our students are taking class from home. And at home, there are a lot of different types of distractions. I have personally seen my, my child on their phone doing other things when they should be listening to class and engaging. And so that, that, those other distractions that we don't necessarily have when kids are in classrooms, in physical classrooms, those do exist. We have situations where we have families that their, their housing is unstable. And so they're forced to try to find space, a quiet space to access the, the school and curriculum. And I think a significant factor in all of this is adult supervision. Expecting five-year-olds, for example, to get online, that's going to require some adult support and adult supervision. And with older kids, you know, a lot of kids are great about logging in and checking and being on schedule, but the, someone sometimes has to point that out and ensure that they're doing what they need to do. Ways that we've attempted to mitigate that sites. One, for, for some of our students who need significant support, we did partner with some community hubs and those students who have attended community hubs that has shown success, especially around their attendance. We specifically targeted students who were potentially chronic absentee or had some history of chronic absenteeism. We look to support our, our fit and fosters families and transition students. And those are the ones we initially targeted for community hubs. And we know those who have attended the hubs have seen a significant increase in their attendance and access. I know that our teachers and our schools are doing, using other tools to try to engage their students. Like Neopods, a great example where the lessons can be interactive and students can participate in what they're doing. And then, of course, we have our care referrals. So as, as we notice students disengaging in the curriculum or dropping off, sites are going through their care process, SST process, ensuring that they connect with those families and students. Another layer to the student engagement challenge is the fact that, you know, for young kids, we're not doing recess. Kids are not there interacting with each other. The social emotional skills, right, the just play that is necessary and it's a big part of schooling, that is really missed in this environment. I listed Wellness Friday activities as both challenge and a mitigation. And I, and I did that purposely because Wellness Friday was a great, it was a great intent, a great thing to do. And I think where, where we've struggled is in staffing Wellness Friday. We, we've dedicated a lot of time to our adult learning, professional learning, and that's been fantastic and it's going to have great rewards for our system long term. But we know that some school sites have, have struggled with really providing a lot of activities or supports for those Wellness Fridays with staff being engaged in, in adult learning. However, there are really some shining examples of sites who have really pulled things together. We've tried to provide some support centrally to provide some wellness activities. I've heard pretty loud and clear though, for, especially for secondary, that Fridays tend to become a lot of just get work done and do score and catch up on the week. So the time is used and utilized, but it hasn't always been the focus of sort of Wellness Friday. So as far as teaching and learning, I've broken into sort of three categories. I've mentioned this before, that adult supervision is actually a big challenge when it comes to teaching and learning. You know, ensuring that our students are fully engaged in the distance learning that they are receiving both synchronous or asynchronous activities is important. And I've heard a lot about parental fatigue. I, I know I feel it as a parent. I know a lot of parents feel it where you're doing double duty. You are not only parenting your child and caring for your child, but you're also basically acting as a secondary teacher or, you know, a, a teacher in the, in the space as well. And, you know, it's almost where, almost to our, our year anniversary, I believe, when we went into COVID. And so a lot of us, I think at one point I, I did an introduction where I was meeting people and said, well, what grade do you teach to parents? Because, you know, so many of our parents have become teachers in this environment. One of the ways we've attempted to mitigate that is obviously use of manipatives. We provide materials and supplies to families. The breakout rooms is a way to just, you know, get engaged students in smaller environments. And then distance learning, one of the things we learned is we cannot over communicate during this time. So schools are using every platform available to communicate to families, keep them in the know. And that's been really critical and important. Instructional materials is an area where, and I will say every site's a little different on their schedules of how it's done. But, you know, as our, we surged in COVID, some of that availability did slow down. And we had to limit some of that time on campus to pick up materials. Some families just can't make it to get their materials and that's been a challenge as well. You know, that just physically getting to the schools and schools had really worked to mitigate that. I've heard of many schools who are doing their own personal deliveries at times, dropping off materials. They've been very flexible about the time of days and when they're available. And of course, we've tried to use our food distribution centers as well. And then, you know, we've provided these literacy toolkits. I really want to, you know, thank the board for approving both books for English learners and books for African American students. We've, we, those books were being, they're not coming to school sites. They were going directly to, to homes of our students and that's, that was a great thing that the board did. As far as the instructional program, we have to acknowledge that in this environment, we've had to adjust and change the curriculum we, we provide to students. We've, we've put a lot on our teachers to really condense the instruction. We've had to condense around being critical about which content standards we're selecting. We can't teach every single standard that's in the common core practice. There's just not enough time to do that. So we had to be really critical in what we teach. And so that's been one of those challenges. Time allocated for assessment versus instruction, that's going to be a significant challenge for us. In this environment, assessing students is challenging. It's extremely challenging. And so I know we have a standardized testing coming up. And I know we're still waiting to hear from the state and federal government if that's going to be waived or not. As of today, it has not been waived that we will be giving the S back very shortly in the spring to measure ELA and math performance. Now, one, some of the ways we've mitigated that work is we have streamlined our curriculum and our content. Teachers are doing a lot of small group instruction, using office hours time to sort of really focus on targeted students. And then we've provided significant asynchronous support options. Social emotional health is another challenge we, we hear a lot about. And this one's a significant one. You know, not being in person with students, you know, there, there's a lot, big feeling of isolation for our students, our secondary students as well. Mental health is one of those areas I've heard a lot about. How do we support those, those students? Like I said, mentioned the feeling of isolation, the lack of ability to connect with peers. I, the camera off invisibility really contributes to some of that, students not being able to really see each other. We have seen in some categories, especially at the secondary level, a decrease in participation in homeroom. I think a big part of that is some of the categories I've heard is that homeroom's not for credit. Right? They don't, they don't get credits for that. I know I've heard significant challenges at Greenwood Academy around that, that, you know, why would they show up if they're not going to get credit for that class? You know, and, and so ways that we work to mitigate some of those things is we did bring in curriculum at the middle and high school level around social emotional learning. Curriculum, adoptive curriculum for them. We, we've seen some real strong instruction happening in the advisory and really those connections being made. Elementary staff had an easier transition with that. I think elementary teachers just sort of understood that process a little better. And then we've, like I said, we've seen increasing care referrals and support. We're strengthening our SST process at the sites, trying to ensure we can get supports for those kids. So moving into attendance and truancy, we definitely have seen an increase in our chronic student, chronically truant students. So we've sort of seen the sort of an increase in the, in better attendance and an increase at the, like on both ends. Sort of the middle has dropped out of, of that, that data. And of course, you know, some I've heard reports of just some challenges in tracking down some students and families that, that have dropped off once, once they've gone. And I heard a report today about a family who, you know, they did, the, the principal was able to connect, to connect with them and she asked the family like, what can I do to support you? And her, her, her answer was basically, I just can't do this distance. I, I need my kid at school. And so those are real challenges for some families. So we did bring back our A to A attendance tracking system and we are using that system to make sure we can work on the issues as they come up quickly. I know we've been holding conferences with families and trying to find ways to support them. One way we've supported with some of the attendance obviously is the community hubs that were built out. Last thing is just providing mental health services to students. We, we are having a challenge in filling some of those slots and part of that is privacy. There is, there are privacy issues and some people don't feel comfortable doing therapy via a screen. And that, that's a reality that we're facing. We have brought in teletherapy and where we've just recently were, did a contract with Seneca. I know my, my colleague Kristin Hardy can speak to that later if there's some questions. And we continue to provide, look for partnerships to increase the supports we have around social emotional health. So now I want to just focus in on some of the special populations. So this slide really is focused on our English language learners as a So this slide really is focused on our English language learners as a group. The first part is the attendance and engagement. Some of the challenges we face obviously is some of the language and translation. There are families who don't feel connected to the school and, and not having that face to face. It's harder to communicate on a screen this way sometimes than it is just in person where you can, can really feel that connection. Communication to families for English learners is a challenge. And I would say that's a challenge, not just of distance learning. This is a challenge that we face even in good times, in regular, normal times of education, but it's sort of made worse in this environment. But we have, like I said, the, we are reaching out to our families. We're doing the attendance conferences. We are holding those care referrals. As far as learning for English language learners, there is a short amount of live instructional time, which for language development really is a challenge. Our English language learners have to hear each other speak. They need to hear that English language and in a Zoom, as you're seeing right now, I'm the only person speaking in this space. If you all try to talk at the same time, we would not be able to understand each other. And so our, our teachers are doing things like the breakout rooms. I was able to witness in our internationals program, a teacher, highly skilled teacher. Using the breakout rooms to get the English learners to communicate with each other, to talk. Preparing presentations and it's just, you know, this environment, you have to take real concrete turns. And so you breaking kids out into communication areas is really challenging. The other piece is the families of V Ls that are not English speaking. Just that technology divide, I think goes back to that digital divide. Not always being able to navigate the instructions that we are given to them in this process. I do want to say that we're, one of the mitigations that we are doing, and I mentioned earlier, we did send materials, books to those families. We are starting next month, some tutoring for our English learners in grades three to six. That'll be supported after school. So African American black students is another one of our special populations that we specifically target. And so some of the same sort of patterns here, the attendance and engagement has been a challenge. You know, we wanted to try to connect them, you know, there's a lack of some of the social elements, human contact. You know, coordinating some of these conversations that are necessary to keep kids, kids connected to school. I will say that we've done significant work to try to mitigate this. I really am so proud of the work coming out of the Office of African American Student Achievement. Elements like the student voice, the game show, the fish bowls, all the events that are happening right now for Black History Month. The continued outreach to families, finding those successes. For learning, you know, one of the struggles is tiered intervention. We are making progress with our tiered intervention. However, in this structure, there are some limitations. We also have to be cognizant of Zoom fatigue and Google Meet fatigue. We can, some of the interventions we provide were just equal to more screen time and that's really challenging in that situation. Similar to the English learners, we have the book, book delivery. We are providing materials and supplies delivered. There is an after school program, the program for academic success was, which is tutoring. For targeted students, and of course, we want to continue to reimagine classes. Mr. McGee mentioned the ethnic studies and, and black history. Are the courses that we're looking at to continue to push our district to expand on those. Mental health is just a concern that we've seen across all groups, but also among our African American students. You know, making sure we're connecting to the students, giving them, keep having their voice in the classroom. We are doing a pilot with Seneca to support students, especially our African American students at some of our high proportionate schools. The other special population I want to speak to is our foster youth and our homeless students. They, they are really challenged when it comes to attendance. That is something we have heard throughout. You know, the inconsistent inconsistency, the stable environment really impacts their access to curriculum. One of the ways we've mitigated that is those learning hubs have been, been really beneficial. We've had parents in tears and excited about having that support. It's really important. And that's provided the consistent wifi. In addition, those hubs have provided nutrition as well, right? Nutrition in areas to engage with other students recess time. In the learning, the transient nature of our fit means, sorry, fit and foster students. Leads to the gaps in the learning. When they're not able to log in or connect with their school. They're, they're just, you know, it leads to chronic truancy, it leads to lack of access to curriculum and, and time with their instructors. We have provided things like the wind block, which is the what I need. That is an intervention block that's built into our schedule. Office hours, I think our, our teachers are doing a tremendous job of utilizing that time. That was a time for them to really target students, do small group, engage one-on-one as needed. Some teachers are using that for some assessment time as well with their students, really important part of the day. They've been provided some partial credits at secondary level. And once again, we mentioned the learning hubs. And with mental health, our fit foster students really have some complex mental health needs and trying to address those i- is a challenge is making sure. As mentioned before, around social emotional health, there are limitations in just, you know, making sure kids are comfortable accessing teletherapy and getting parents connected to that. So moving into special education, and I want to remind us that we, we did have two special educators present. The, on the previous distance learning section one around the, the ways they've been working to mitigate this. Assessment service delivery and progress margin is one of those challenges we face, not just in special education. Cause I want to remind everyone that special education is general education with additional supports. This is something we see throughout, right? That there, we've mentioned the assessment challenge before. Trying to make sure we were scheduling the sessions that are necessary. That's been a challenge. One thing to note is our students with extensive service needs are yes and they're, they're probably the ones that are most greatly impacted in this environment. It's just challenging for those classes and for those teachers. And they're doing such a great job of trying to connect with our students in this environment for them. And some of the technology being really difficult for some of those students to navigate. But as mentioned earlier, there are some really wonderful things that the special department has done. They're using new virtual assessments that are aligned to national standards. They are providing teletherapy services for students. Their paraprofessionals have all received the training they need with technology. Reminder that a number of our students have one-to-one aids. And so this environment allowing them to really connect. Using new data tools to collect that are embedded on online instruction and therapeutic platforms. Allowing the flexibility for our service providers to really connect with the students and families. And of course, working through the IP process for individual students and families. We know IPs in this environment has, have, have looked different and they've had to make adjustments for distance learning. So I'm going to just close with a quick summary and next steps. We do want to continue to explore opportunities to increase students doing interactions. You've probably heard me say hubs, I don't know, six, seven times. We know that that's an opportunity for our students to get additional support. We, we did, we partnered with our community agent, outside community agencies to do those hubs. We'd like to continue to explore those options for families who need it the most. And of course, explore additional supports to bridge those digital divides. You know, we, we're looking at things like wifi into our community. I know that there, there are different discussion items that will be coming to the board. And how do we increase that access? Well, thank you. And I know that was long and I'm here for questions. And so is some, some of my, some of my colleagues are here as well for questions if needed.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Aurelio. And walking this through it. I appreciate it. I'm sure the rest of the board does as well. We're going to move on to questions. We're starting with Mrs. Reckler.
Great, thank you. And even though this is supposed to be questions, I'm just going to preface this by saying that I, everybody has my deep thanks. For pulling forward in this unbelievably unprecedented time. And, and from my heart, really thank you. With that, of course, I could ask questions all night, but I'm just going to pick off a few to begin with, so that everybody gets a chance. My first question is about hubs and many of us were at the DL caps meeting last night. And there was some conflicting information about hubs that there was great need, but they're not full. And I'm wondering if that could be, if someone could comment on that. Is it the wrong?
No, I, I, I can speak to the numbers. I, I believe my team Blake, the numbers you mentioned, we do have some space in some of those hubs. I know that our pal, she mentioned sixteen spots and our pal is the one that's servicing older students, third grade and up. And we've made a number of offers and then they haven't been taken. So we do have some spots in the R P L program. I think we believe we have eight spots available in the YMCA and two at the Bright Futures. So those are the spots we have. We're currently servicing one hundred and twelve students with community hubs.
Okay. And so is there still great need? So it's, so the, so the resource isn't exactly where the need is, it seems like, maybe a little bit.
This is Mr. Duffy. We were going to bring some more contracts to expand the seats in more hubs. And I think if I call correctly, the board asked us to hold on that until they could finish all of the study sessions before proceeding with any more. Hubs or hub agreements led by community providers.
I, I'd also might want to add that our hubs are sort of regionally based. We, we don't provide transportation hubs. So we really targeted schools that were near the location of the hubs.
Do we have fit and foster families now that need a hub and aren't done of access to one?
I, off the top of my head, I'm going to say yes. And I believe there are fit and foster families that could use hubs.
Okay, thank you. The second question is about cameras and I struggle with this at home myself. We have some differing viewpoints here in this household. But I was wondering perhaps if the district might be able to form or create a universal backdrop so that everybody has the same backdrop, because I know that's part of our issue.
So my understanding that our challenge is with the devices we provide students. That Google Meet Zoom does not allow like Chromebooks, we're not able to do virtual backgrounds. So we've had that same idea and Tracy's here and she probably can speak to it better than I can, but I believe there's a device limitation to that.
That's right. If you're on, you can do it on your own laptop, but Chromebooks do not allow you to create the customized background. Or, you know, I think we would see lots of our students using that. So that is a tremendous issue that we've encountered.
Okay. My other question on cameras is, is this possibly something that the student congress could toss around and perhaps come up with a?
I think it's a great thing to bring to student congress and see what the recommendations would be from the students themselves. I think at our very first congress, we brought up that, that same topic. Now that we have a more fully fleshed group of students, I think it's a great topic to bring back to them.
Okay. The other question I have is around attendance conferences. We had that presentation a couple of. It feels like a year ago at this point. But have all schools, are all schools firmly in that process now? And is there a data that's going to come back on an update on that?
I'm going to say yes, that all schools are in the process and we can definitely bring back data in a future meeting. Or if you want, we can update you all through the Friday memo, an updated data set.
Okay. And I'm going to ask one last question with everybody else get a chance, but assessments and assessment data, will that be shared with us at some point? Something must be going on now.
Yeah. So for example, our star reading and star math assessment, we are just, either we just wrapped up, we're right around wrapping up our winter assessment cycle. And what's important about that is now having both a fall and a winter, we can look at growth metrics. And so that will be something we'll be providing to you all very soon. What we can, we can discuss if you wanted as a presentation or to be included as a Friday memo. Or, or actually just maybe bring it to the academic committee and start there. We can figure that out.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll stop for now and give everybody else a shot. But if anybody doesn't have anything else to ask, I got a whole page here, so.
So I'm sure you will, Mrs. Reckler, Mr. Gonzalez Boy.
Thank you, President Phillips. Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Actually, trustee Reckler asked majority of my questions, so I have only a couple left. Thank you, trustee Reckler. And, you know, to continue on the, the hubs question. I've heard us that some of our hubs had to close. I was wondering if you could just confirm that with me because I've asked and I haven't gotten an answer.
Yeah, I can, I can take that, Mr. Aurelio. Yes, there have been times where there's been a closure or a brief closure. I know our pal had closed for a minute. You know, especially in the early times as they are figuring out more and more about contact tracing, et cetera. So yes, it, it, it has happened. Here and there over the course of the year.
Okay, thank you. My next question is about testing. Mr. Aurelio, you mentioned the S back. If the state was to give waivers or we decided to cancel the S back this year. What are our local, local measures for, for, for assessments and, and data?
So for grades two to eight, we do have our star reading, our star math assessment. Teachers obviously are utilizing their own assessments that are curriculum tied to their curriculum. At the secondary level, we've done a reading inventory. We have used in the past the I A Bs and that's something that's still accessible to us, the I A Bs for secondary as well, all the way down to third grade. We had that in our cycle of assessment this year as well, the I A Bs and they, you know, they're both smaller blocks. So we can look at specific blocks or we can look at the comprehensive assessment if needed.
Okay, thank you for that. And my last question is about grading. I was wondering if, if you could talk about the process for grading for this spring. Is it going to be the same as the fall with a narrative? Report card for elementary, could, could you just mention what it is going to be?
Yeah, of course. So our, our MOU with the, the teachers was for this one year around grading and we did agree to do the narrative based report cards for elementary. And then we are still using letter grades for secondary. And that will continue into the spring. We are formulating a steering committee around grading to continue to, to examine our grading policies and look for what, what moves we make moving into the fall.
Okay. Thank you very much, President Phillips. That was my last question.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Christian.
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. I want to ask a question, actually it's going back to the digital divide. And it's going back to the hotspots. And let me ask this question in, in area two. Far as the wifi, the hotspot, how's, how's all that set up in like an area two to say area two in the cell?
So I'm going to ask Tracy if you're on, she might be able to answer that way better than I can.
Sure. In terms of the hotspots for students, so basically we have a process for all students. If a student does not have reliable home internet. They, their parents, a teacher, someone that knows them can put in a request. Originally, we were just doing one hotspot per family, but realized that that was not enough, right? So, you know, since the summer, we've shifted that. So any student that needs a hotspot because their home internet is not good, we give them a hotspot. And as Mr. Aurelio said earlier, there are parts of the city, there are dense housing neighborhoods and, and housing complexes where the signal is just not consistent. It's on, it's off, kids get kicked out. So we've also purchased, our main hotspot is the T-Mobile hotspots with unlimited data. We've purchased a second kind, which is AT&T to try to fill in some of those dead zones, some of those dead spots. So if we hear from a family or a teacher that says this kid is constantly getting kicked out, we'll swap it out and try that. As Mr. Aurelio said, a lot of this really is trial and error. The wifi with hotspots in particular is, it's, it's a tricky business. It's not, it's not the long-term solution. So that is also why we're looking at building out a community wifi project to, you know, wire up and get our communities connected reliably with wireless to the home.
Okay. And the next question I'm going to ask that goes along with that, are we working with the city of Richmond or are we working with?
Yeah. Yeah. So we're working with the city of Richmond and the city of San Pablo specifically and first. So we look at our hotspot data of, of about the, I think it's at this point, almost fifty-six hundred hotspots that we've given out to students. The majority of them, about fifty-seven percent live in Richmond and San Pablo. So we're working with the cities. We're going to be doing a proof of concept in two different areas, one in Richmond, close to Lincoln Elementary. One in San Pablo, San Pablo, close to Helms, to build out that community wifi in this, over the spring months to see how that works out. And then we build it out and expand it from there.
Okay, cuz, all right. Okay, cuz, all right, and then the next one would be when the devices break, how long does it take for that student to get that device?
So when a device breaks, if their Chromebook breaks, as soon as we know about it. So generally speaking, we've given every single school set about between ten and fifteen Chromebooks to have on hand. So if a device breaks, student calls it in, parent calls it in, they can come to the school and swap it out. We have the same thing at our I T office on Petrero and we can swap it out. So it's, I would say it's generally twenty four hour turnaround.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's it for right now.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smith Folds.
Hi, thank you. So my question is, what specific sources were used to compile this data? Like this information, what data tools were used?
So a lot of this came from, I asked feedback of our site administrators to really share some of the challenges that they were hearing and seeing on a regular basis. And I will say it's also gathering information from meetings I've been in throughout the year, comments I've heard. Even some of the things I heard from our all student Congress when we were first gathering some of the concerns, especially when it's social emotional health, the social connections. So it was tabulated from that information. Of course, we've had, we've looked at attendance data that was presented at a previous board presentation. We can definitely go out with a sort of a concrete survey. I know we've sent a lot of surveys out to our families recently.
And my last question is, have we compared this data and this analysis to February twenty twenty? Because that's the last marker before the world shut down. So do we have comparative data between what we have now and February twenty twenty? And if we don't, can we get it?
That's a great question. I'm trying to think of which specific markers or indicators I would look at. I mean, we have assessment data, which like the star data, we could compare one year to the next. We have that. We don't have S P A C data because we didn't take S P A C last year. So I know that's not going to be.
But we have attendance, we have attendance data. Something around engagement because even teachers even understood engagement, you know.
One of the, one of the challenges with some of that data, for example, like suspension data really is not going to be a good match, right? Because we're not seeing suspensions in the traditional sense in our current environment. So that, as you saw even last night, if you were at the D L cap, there was a lot of blank areas around data just because of the transition we had to make. They're not, we don't have all those traditional data sets like we once did. But I can definitely look at areas that are comparable and try to find some things that we can discuss.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that's my last question because I can't formulate that discussion point into a question. So I have to wait to discussion, trustee Phillips, I was trying, but I can't figure out how to put a question in it. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are all doing a lot better with your questions, so I want to say I appreciate all of you for doing that. So next, we're gonna go on to Ms. Emiliano. And Ms. Emiliano, if you want to make a, if you have a question, I'm sorry, I should have set that up for you. If you have a question about the presentation that we just received, now is the time for you to ask your question.
I do have a quick question. I'm not sure if I missed it. However, Wellness Friday is something that we've put on the students to work on at our school, the students and our leadership. And I was wondering what specifically, if you know, is the purpose of Wellness Friday and like what is the objective of it?
Sorry, I was muted. So Wellness Friday obviously is going to look very different at different levels. In the elementary level, it's a way to have, we looked at it, the intent of Wellness Friday was to have opportunities for students to engage in a sort of not formally academic way, right? Monday through Thursday, there's a lot of coursework, classes. And really Wellness Fridays was really to address some of those social emotional needs, opportunities for students to engage each other. So at the secondary level, what you are seeing is things like clubs and groups that way. And that's why you mentioned that this, it's been sort of put on students to engage. So your traditional clubs and teams that you would see at the secondary level could formulate and meet on Fridays. We want, I know there are sites that are offering asynchronous activities like video ways, cooking, art, things like that, that they wouldn't typically get during the week are also been put on on Fridays for students to access.
Okay, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Leon, do you have any question?
Yes, I have one question. So I was wondering how Wellness Friday has like impacted students and if we have any data on that from like students reaching out or any comments they have made?
I don't have specific data to share with you around the Wellness Friday. It's something that we will have to gather some more information. I mentioned, and I know you are part of the all student Congress that we did in our initial all student Congress, talk about Wellness Friday and sort of the activities. And a lot of students really shared sort of what they were doing during those Fridays. We definitely heard from the secondary section that students were using those Fridays to really do their sort of catch up work for the week and get caught up on some of the schoolwork that they have since they didn't have synchronous classes with their teachers. That that's really become a lot of what Friday was for secondary students. But it's definitely a point, we definitely want to go out and gather some of that data. Thank you, Thomas.
Mr. Leon, was that your final question?
Yes, that was my final question.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. We have three people in the queue for public comment right now. So I see the hands popping up. So I'm stalling again. You raise your hand now. Because once we move to public comment, it's only going to be the hands that are raised when we start. Okay, so that said, Mr. Aurelio, please take us to public comment. I think Ms. Warfield is who's the last person?
I see ten hands. Do you want me?
Okay. Whoever's the last person that you have.
I will note it and we will begin. Jerry Strauss, you can unmute. Jerry, can you begin your comment?
Good evening. My name is actually Ariel Strauss. I live a few blocks from Danza High School. And I very much appreciate their report, Mr. Aurelio. The detailing the difficulties and deficiencies in the virtual schooling program, and they are massive. I'm calling in tonight, even though I'm not a student and I don't have any children in the district, because public education is the most important institution, as you know, in our society today. And virtual school unfortunately is inherently deficient. And it's most efficient for those families and those students who need it most. And the consensus is, you know, if you listen to the responsible source of information, the CDC, medical professionals, educational professionals, media sources, virtually everybody but the, some of the representatives for the teachers unions is that in-person schooling is safe, at least it's as safe as what's happening outside of school. Coronavirus is killing people out in the community right now. But we don't need to also add on top of that the inequitable harms that are being brought upon families and communities by keeping the schools closed. And I've seen the reopening plan, it's not realistic. You need to reopen the schools yourself now as soon as you can without waiting for what's going to happen outside of your society.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adrisa Latier. You may unmute, Adrisa.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, my hand, that was an accident. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to have my hand raised. You guys go ahead.
Thank you, no problem. Our next speaker is T J Warfield.
Thank you. I wanted to just talk about some concerns about one of the new technology platforms that's being rolled out that wasn't discussed in this presentation, and that's securely. That is being rolled out to all of the various, not all of the, the Google Chromebooks. That I can see how that platform is going to be beneficial to some kids, but I fear that it's going to have the opposite effect to the vast majority of kids. That it's gets very big brotherly where it allows the teacher to freeze their screen, lock them out of their computer, control which tabs they have open on browsers, close tabs, force them to open another tab, be able to view what they have on their screen at that very moment, block what's webpages they can go to, view their browsing history, that especially as, you know, the, with the older kids that, you know, we keep coming back to this, this trust issue and trust isn't just about us parents, it's about the kids as well. And if the kids are having a hard time engaging, knowing that their teacher at a moment can know what they're doing at any particular time and force them to try to get them back into the moment, I fear it's going to have the vastly opposite effect. So I'm very thankful that we're not using a Chromebook. Because as an employee, if I had my employer suddenly forces on me, I would want to bail. So I'm, I'm concerned that it's going to have the opposite effect that what it's trying to do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is C Peters. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Carol Peters. I am a teacher at Hercules Middle School. I just wanted to point out, Ms. Jimmy LaFolds, trustee Smith Folds said something about collecting data. And I think that there are opportunities to collect data comparing first semester of last year to first semester of this year, especially when it comes to grades. Our school was able to do it quickly when I asked, you know, quickly and we looked at it briefly. But there's data for us to look at and I encourage the district to ask all schools to do that. If we keep, if people keep saying that students are failing or more students are failing than ever, if that's the truth, the data will support that. And looking at first semester of last year, when we were in person and first semester of this year, so nineteen nineteen to twenty twenty, we can do that and we can look at and see which students are kind of staying at that level and how many are new failures or are improving. We can look at data like that, so I encourage the district to do that. Also, I'm calling because, or I'm speaking because you said something about one-on-one aids. And I have a student who has been, who has an I E P who needs a one-on-one aid and has been looking for one since the end of last year and still hasn't received it. The parent is upset. The parent is struggling to support their child and we on campus don't know where to go find the one-on-one aids. We don't know who to call. The parent doesn't know who to call and we're kind of all stuck. And so I'm, again, if there are one-on-one aids and people are getting support, people need to know where to find these resources. Parents need to know where to find these resources. Staff needs to know. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Parrots. Let's see if that works this time.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I'm curious about what's happening with the high interest, I'll call them hands-on classes, the challenges of photography, welding, music, et cetera, things on the secondary level. What, what sort of, what have we learned and what sort of progress have we made in those areas? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Sato Wilson. You can unmute.
Good evening again, Sato Wilson. I'm just curious as to when putting the data together. It'd be great to get the educator voice because we're the forerunners, we're on the, based in the front lines of the distance learning education. And also in twenty seventeen, there was a one-to-one rollout for technology for students to get a laptop tablet. So I think over time, there could have been plenty of time to prepare for an event such as this to get students proper technology, proper Wi-Fi and whatnot, and then for it to be successful at home. So I think that's something I think, you know, like, like pretty much just missed the boat on that one. But I think at the end of the day, I think it's just, you know, look at the data that we have from last semester and this semester. And again, there's a lot going on here with the distance learning that I feel that teachers are being held accountable for, for things that that is out of our control. So this is, there's a lot of situations here. It's more from a district level, it's more from just a community level. And it's not just a hundred percent educators. So again, you know, make sure that, make sure it's more inclusive and give a bigger, rounder picture of what's going on in the district. To me, this look like, oh, we're doing fine, this is what we have. But it's not clear based on the emails I see, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, what I'm hearing from parents and whatnot. I mean, it's still just kind of putting Band-Aid on the wound and expecting it to just move on from there. Thank you.
Next speaker, Gabrielle McLeary. You can, let's see. Can unmute? Ms. McLeary, are you able to unmute?
Oh, sorry. Gabrielle McLeary, I'm a first grade teacher at Verde Elementary and also elementary director for U T R. I was very curious watching this presentation about Wellness Fridays because I remember hearing about them last year as we were getting ready to start the fall and thinking that sounded like a great opportunity for students to have that time to socialize, to get to know each other, to do all those things that, in my case, first graders need to do to develop. But I have yet to see anything in terms of Wellness Fridays at my school site. We haven't seen any activities or anything like that to supplement the asynchronous learning students are doing while we're in our own learning sessions. And I'm concerned that, I hope we haven't written it off as we're not going to do it this year when we have over a third of the school year left. I really hope the district will go to the schools that have been successful with it and see what we can spread to all the other schools to really give students an opportunity for that social emotional learning for that wellness, so they can be with each other, be social, do all the wonderful things that we include in our classroom, but that we can't do with them on Fridays because of our P D. So I really hope this will be looked into as how we can support more with those Wellness Fridays and not just assume that teachers or students will take care of it themselves. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Giorgio Constantino. You may unmute.
Yeah, hi, Giorgio Constantino. I'm a current parent in the district and a former teacher. I just wanted to comment on just kind of an observation and related to this topic and, you know, it has to do with the ratio of assessment to instruction. And the teachers are in a difficult situation of having to accomplish both in the less amount of time. What, you know, what I'm looking at is, you know, I've seen examples of just what appears to be a greater percentage of assessment, you know, the class time being devoted to assessment. When you look at the, out of the total hours that the teacher has with the, with the students. And, you know, you throw in the, also the, you know, the standardized testing. You know, teaching should also include, there's a building, a period for building confidence and nurturing of the student. And so I think maybe there's going to be less of that now as a result of this type of scenario. And that maybe leads to some of the truancy problems that you're seeing. If it's just going to be test, test, test. And anyway, so just something to think about, but you know, yeah, I, you know, the teachers need our support. They're in an impossible situation right now as are our students, my kids, my daughter too. Thanks.
Lauren B, can you identify yourself and begin your comment?
Hi, good evening to all and thank you for your time. My name is Lauren Burns and I am a parent of two elementary students. In many of the conversations surrounding distance learning and the return to school, there is a focus on the school buildings and their deficiencies, the needs for safety and P P E supplies and ways to prevent the spread of COVID for all. We hear from the school board, teachers and parents, but we seldomly hear from students specifically about their mental health issues that so many of the children in our lives are encountering. So I would like to take this time to share with you the perspective of my eight-year-old daughter. She is now suffering from anxiety and is struggling during distance learning. I know there are so many with similar feelings and many more much worse situations. I'd like to share an assignment that their teacher gave them on Monday. And I'm sorry if I get emotional during, while I read this. On Monday morning, the teacher asked, how is distance learning going for you? Please be honest, what is working, what isn't working? What are some different feelings that you experience? As your teacher, I am here for you no matter what you say. My eight-year-old answered, distance learning is not going well for me. It makes me very stressed and I don't like being stressed. It makes me feel angry, sad, stressed and mean, and I don't like being mean to my family. I used to love school, but now it is just too hard for me and I'm starting not to like it. I wish we could just all go back to normal. I know so many other children are in much worse situations, but I just wanted to give. I know so many other children are in much worse situations, but I just wanted to give some of the students, um, a voice this evening. Thank you for your time.
Next is Greg Crissinger. Greg, you can unmute, begin your comment.
Hi, I have a six-year-old, uh, within the district and, uh, she has been going to school for less than an hour. Per day of in-person learning. Uh, she meets with her class from ten to ten thirty and then from eleven twenty to eleven thirty-five. I've read the MOU with, uh, the teachers unions and with the district and we're supposed to be getting. And thirty minutes as well as three forty-five minute sessions. And so my six-year-old is getting, uh, less than an hour per day from Monday through Thursday. And then nothing on Fridays, uh, except for some activity that, uh, we're supposed to do at home. I've taken off of work, I, I only work about forty percent of the time. Um, and so we're, we're being impacted financially as well, um, both Monday through Thursday as well as your Friday, uh, wellness days. I've written to the teachers, I've written to the principals, I've written to the teachers' union, uh, as well to, to talk to them about the concern. This is the entire first grade, uh, curriculum, it's all three teachers, uh, working and providing in-person, uh, one-on-one. For, for an hour to, to maybe an hour and fifteen minutes. Um, so I think that, uh, my concern is, is that these are six-year-olds and, and it, it's insane that. You know, we, we've been going a year and, uh, we're going to continue to go on, um, probably until the fall. And she's not receiving the education that she, uh, deserves within the district. So I th- I thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
So this is the last hand that was raised when this item started. This is DH Kong. You can unmute.
Hi, thank you. This is Gillian Banks Kong. Sorry, I'm on my husband's computer tonight. So I'm with the West Contra Costa Safe Open Schools and, um, the first thing I want to say is that as a member of this group. Um, I fully support teachers. I really feel for the situation that the teachers are in. I'm learning more and more about what it's like for them inside the classrooms and the ways in which that they feel that they haven't been supported by the district. How they've been vilified in the press. Um, and I just, I want to say that, you know, I hear you and I'm sorry. I think that a lot of that is coming from fear. Um, parents are really afraid and then that fear is translated into anger. I, I know that that was personally happening for me. So moving on from that, I want to say about tonight that, um, it was mentioned that you're starting, um, this wifi. Uh, you're trying to beef up the wifi in two areas to start with in the spring and then moving on from there, I believe was the quote. And that really alarmed me because to me that sounds like you're not planning on going back to school in the fall. You're starting this in the spring and then quote, moving on from there, aren't we going to be back to school in the fall? So that, that scared me. That's all I've got. Thank you.
That's the last comment for this item. Mr. President Phillips.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, we are going to move on to, uh, board discussion. Uh, before we move on, I just want to remind the board, uh, and the public that we are doing these study sessions. Uh, we will have a listening session and then we will have a more robust, uh, board discussion that may cover some of the things that were brought up today. Uh, but it's discussion now. Uh, Mrs. Reckler, you're first.
Great, thank you. First Superintendent Duffy, would you please follow up on the one-on-one aid question? And also the parent that called in with the concern about live instruction. Second is, I would like to see, um, or I think it's important to look at the needs of our fit and foster. Um, and if they need hubs and we, those of us who were at the DL cap meeting last night, it is, I believe it is, there's data that's very effective. For our fit and foster and so I would like to see that come back and agendized quickly. Um, and Wellness Fridays, I, I didn't ask because I thought somebody else was going to. But if we could get a follow-up on that and perhaps if one school doesn't have a bandwidth, perhaps another school's got it. And, uh, you know, curriculum could be shared or, you know, something to patch that over, but I think we do need a follow-up on that. Um, and I'll, I'll save some for everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips. Um, so, so yeah, I just wanted to start by thanking our staff. I know that this is a presentation about challenges and I know that there's also many bright spots and, and successes. But it's also important to, to find out what those challenges are so that we can change some, some things for kids, right? So I do wish there were been a more about the successes so that it was balanced and I do hope we get that later, uh, in another meeting. Uh, but at the same time, it is good to hear about our, of our challenges so that, again, like I mentioned, like, so we can do something about them. Um, you know, I, I do hope, uh, Mr. Elio, that we can include the student congress in developing whatever grading is going to look like this fall. I do think that the student perspective is key. Um, also about more about the Wellness Fridays, if we can ask them about their input. And what we can do, as one of the callers said, with one-third of the school year left, what we can do on Fridays for them. Uh, to create, to create a more social, social, uh, space. Um, for the hubs, you know, I was very concerned just here yesterday at the El Cap meeting that we had so much space at the hub still. Um, I do hope that we can communicate them more with families, especially families that need them, like trustee Reckler mentioned. Um, because they should be full. Um, and I would want to have a conversation, President Phillips, about the hubs that we were going to talk about in December. About those coming back so we can have a conversation about whether or not we want to expand them to other organizations to support us. Uh, to provide that opportunity for families. I did want to talk about the community internet, uh, providing more internet does not mean that we're not going to open in the fall. Just means that we want to continue to strengthen our access for students and families. Especially if we do open, we are opening potentially in a hybrid model on the fall, right? So there are still going to be people who are at home, learning from their computers. So we need to have good internet for everybody. And I know it hasn't been accessible for many areas, uh, for various reasons. So we need to continue to invest that and thank you. Ms. Logan and her team for, for creating that partnership. And then, uh, you know, for the future, when we talk about challenges, I do want to see maybe some action orientation to them. I know that there were like, there was on the right-hand side of the presentation on things, of things that we were doing. But maybe also recommendations that staff has for the board on things that we can act on. Um, so that again, we are action-oriented to, to the needs of our kids. Um, and, and lastly, yes, I am really interested to hear tonight about our student trustees and, and their experience, um, as well. Uh, thank you, President Phillips. That was it.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to move on to Mr. Christian. Comment.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, President Phillips. Uh, I don't, I want to thank the staff, you know, for this presentation. And just sitting here, there's a lot that has to be done and a lot of our young people need, it's going to need a lot of support. In so many ways, um, that we, that a lot of our young people are, um. You know, are not tuned in. And so we got to work on really connecting, um, and making sure. That we do the best that we can do is to help, help our students and especially with the learning hubs. Um, making sure that we, uh, put, so the work can go out there, you know, getting our young people to the learning hub. So they can be able to, um, uh, have the services. So, um, um, also because my mind is the, uh, the, uh, the foster care. I guess you'd say in like the, uh, kids that are, uh, the foster youth and, um, and the homeless kids. You know, it, it touched my heart so many ways that, um, it's a lot of work got to be done. I will say this, uh, uh, there's a group that, that I'll, I'm going to be going out in the community this, this coming week. It's called New Life Movement and they're going to be handing coats out to, uh, some of the homeless kids and, um. In the areas and so I will be going out, um, and connecting with a lot of the people, students or families that are out there. Uh, this coming, uh, Saturday. So, uh, we got a lot of work to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Uh, Mrs. Smithfold.
So, um, internet access should not be a privilege. Internet access should be a guarantee. Everyone should have internet access, whether we're in school or we're not in school. So that needs to get solved no matter where we are or what we're doing. That should be, that's not a privilege. That's, that should be a guarantee in life, like many other things. Um, testing this year, I want everyone to be real clear around testing. When you're testing at home, there's no way of making sure who's doing that test. So we have to understand that, like, that just has to be put out there. Every parent has the best intention. But if I see my kid drowning, I'm going to yank him out of the pool. You know what I mean? So it's like if that's so, testing is going, we have to be clear around what testing is going to look like. Everybody's going to be a four-point O this year. You know, everybody's going to be reading three times above their reading level. The test was already skewed when we were in class, it was already biased and had racial problems with it. At home is going to have more problems. So let's just make sure that we all understand that. My final comment is we have to be very careful when we do slides and when we present things. And this is what I'm talking about. When we presented the slides, we presented slides on EOL, foster youth and our African-American students. Only the African-American students had sports written in there. Our black children are more than their bodies. Our black children are more than their bodies. So the fact that wherever you gathered the information from, that that was brought up, we need to do more race and equity work. Because that's an implicit bias that the black children are suffering in sports. It may be true, but that is not just true for black children. That's not just a challenge for black children. They are more than just their body. So I just want to make sure that we all understand that. Black children are brains as well. Um, that's it, President Phillips. I appreciate it.
I appreciate you too. Uh, we're going to move on to, uh, Ms. Emiliano.
Um, from my understanding of what was said in the presentation, Wellness Friday is something that's been put, um. As a response, uh, responsibility that's been put on the individual schools, um, to kind of figure out. Um, but I feel that not all, kind of building on what Ms. Reckler said. Um, not all schools may have the facilities to do a Wellness Friday, to have an event, um, that. Like to have an event for their students. So I think it would be a really good idea to have events maybe across the district. I know in Hercules High School, we've had like, um, and we've gone to do esports tournaments. That although they aren't like academically rigorous, um, it is a good, I've noticed that it is a good change for students. To not always be like learning something. Um, also I, in our homeroom classes, some teachers have tried to, um. Implement the mental health videos. Um, however, it's not always received well. I think, um, making things always like a video or like a learning experience might not always be the best. Especially in a time where things can be very stressful and like many students are stressed and they don't know what to do. They feel out of control, which doesn't, um. Doesn't make things better for them. Um, but I think it could be very helpful to make things kind of go back to like elementary school. Or like the lower grades where things you learned as you played instead of like just learning. Because just learning and being fed a bunch of information can be very demanding on a student. And especially in a class where they're not being graded, it may make them feel as though they shouldn't do anything. Um, and I've definitely noticed that within multitude of students throughout, um, Hercules High School, as well as with students that I've talked to. Who don't go to Hercules High School. Um, but yeah, I think it would be very help, um, helpful to have Wellness Friday events. That aren't only for specific schools, but across the district. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. Leon.
Uh, yes, so, um, to add to the Wellness Friday at our school, uh, we have a one-hour check-in with our homeroom teachers. And, um, some students find it useful and other students find it not so useful. Um, because many students like to sleep in in the morning and this is a, as a, uh, impediment to their sleep. Um, so that's one concern I want to bring out. And another concern is the, the, the increased screen time from distance learning. And as many studies have suggested that the screen time can cause a variety of, uh, health issues. And I just want to emphasize that is the issue that many students have, um, have brought up to me. So, yeah, that is off, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, I just want to add a couple of things and, and some clarification. Uh, so one, uh, this presentation is about challenges. Uh, but it, it's a continuation of the presentation that we had a few weeks ago. So you all may remember, we had a distance learning presentation and, um, challenges were not discussed. Uh, in that presentation, it was more centered on, uh, successes, I'll put it that way. Um, so this is actually the second half of the presentation and this is the balance. But because they were so far apart, um, it just doesn't seem like that. But this is really part two of the presentation that came up before. This second thing that I want to talk about, uh, is, uh, state testing or standardized testing. Uh, California, uh, may or may not, uh, cancel standardized testing. Uh, but parents have the right to opt their children out if they so choose. Uh, I'm not saying that parents should do that. I do that, but I'm not saying that parents should do that. Uh, but it is their right, uh, and they should know, uh, that. Uh, the second thing that I want to talk about is, uh, a, a, a plan or, or, or a map. A roadmap for us, uh, as to how we resolve some of these issues around, um, distance learning. Um, and this is a situation that we're in and I'm not going to go too far because we're going to have a, a discussion meeting, uh, where we do this as a, as a group. Um, but currently we have some hubs where we have partnered with, uh, folks. That may or may not be the solution, but just from this one conversation, uh, it is evident that the spots are not full. Uh, and I know that from conversations here with us tonight. I know that from conversations, uh, previous, uh, to tonight that I've been in. So, you know, before we begin, it's very easy to just pile on, right? And this is what people do, right? It's, there's a problem. So you just start piling things on so you could, you, you feel like you're doing something. But if we start creating more hubs and the ones that we have are not full in the first place. Maybe we need to step back and, and, and actually think about, is this the right strategy? Um, and it may be, but you definitely have to have some reflection of the hubs that we have are not even full. Uh, but I do think that we, we begin to have, you know, the discussion around as a board, which we will. Um, as these study sessions are coming to a, a, a close, uh, when we begin to have that discussion as a board. Um, if, if the body believes that, you know, hubs are the solution, that, that's what the body believes. But there will come a time where we're able to have a conversation about, uh, comprehensively how, how we're going to tackle. Uh, the issues that our children, uh, are facing. So I, I promise that that conversation is coming and any, um. Uh, comments that people want to make, uh, any solutions that people want to offer, uh, whether that's hubs or anything else. Uh, there will be a space, uh, for, for everybody to put that out there. Um, and then the last thing that I want to say is to piggyback on what, uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy said earlier. I know that there are a lot of people out there who are trying to read between the lines to figure out, you know, what's going to happen. You know, are we going to be back in the fall? Are we going to, you know? We will have these conversations and we will have these conversations as a community. Uh, so folks are not going to have to read between the lines. Uh, we're not going to play hide the ball on it. Um, and we are, uh, working as a organization. And when I say an organization, I mean as an organization to move forward. Um, but you know, I get why people are reading between the lines. Uh, you don't have to do that. There will come a point where it will all just be, you know, very clear. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, where I want to say thank you to you. Because you were right on the money when you made the comment. Uh. So, yeah, I'll, so I'll leave it at that. Um, that concludes that item. Uh, we're going to go on to item, uh, E2, which is the vaccination update, uh, in our community. Uh, Mr. Duffy.
Great, thank you. And thank you for everybody involved in that last report. And we continue to do everything we can to, to strengthen our program. Uh, we're switching gears a little bit here. Um, tonight, we're really fortunate. Um, and if we could go ahead and, uh, bring up the, the. Um, the prices of the item, that would be great. Tonight, we're really fortunate to have members from the John Muir Health Community who are gonna tell us a little bit about what's going on with COVID-19, what's happening with vaccinations. Dr. Rachel Oliver, and I'm gonna share her bio, is one of our presenters. And we're really happy that Dr. Oliver's here. She is one of the current chief residents at John Muir Health Family Medicine Residency. Began her residency with the program in 2018 after graduating from the UC Davis School of Medicine. During her time in medical school, she was heavily involved in the student-run clinics that served many of the most vulnerable populations in the Sacramento area, including Imani Clinic, which focused on working with black and Hispanic underserved communities. In her time as resident with John Muir Health, she's expanded her interest to include prenatal care and resident leadership. Her projects have focused on creating resources to improve access to patient education around family planning and pregnancy care. And as chief resident, she also created curriculum with her colleagues to train residents how to be teachers and leaders. After graduation this June, she'll be joining the residency as a core faculty member, where she hopes to continue to work to promote health equities for pregnant women in our community. I also believe Dr. Oliver may be joined by one other physician, Dr. Nava. She can let us know that. And I also wanna thank publicly Sharon Jenkins, who's on the External Relations Team for John Muir, for helping us get this collaboration together and bringing some of her team here. So with that said, I think we've promoted our folks to presenters so we can bring up their presentation. Unless, let's just check in unless they would like to drive it and share a screen. So, Dr. Oliver, Dr. Nath, are, are you here? Can we test that you're ready to go?
Hi, I'm here. I'm not sure if Dr. Nath is.
Okay. And would you like us to just move the slides for you? Would that be easiest?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, great. So we'll bring that up. Oh, I think Dr. Nath is still in the attendee pool, so maybe.
I just promoted Dr. Nath.
Great, okay, fantastic. So let's just do a quick sound check with Dr. Nath that he can talk successfully into this Zoom.
I think I can talk.
Oh, there you are, okay. Great to see you. And we got a chance to see you at our superintendent's meeting. So thank you for being here again, very much appreciate it. So, all right, we'll bring up the presentation and you just let us know when to click the slides and we'll move them forward for you.
Okay, cool.
And Dr. Nath, I, do you wanna just do a quick introduction of yourself? Since I, I didn't have your full bio and just share with everybody your role? You're muted.
Shoot, they did it again. So I'll go really quick. My name's Kishore Nath. I'm one of the, the faculty teaching physicians at John Muir Health. And I graduated medical school 20 years prior to Dr. Oliver from USC. And I am originally from Southern California. Full disclosure, wife, my wife went to Deans. My two colleagues that sit next to me are, went to Pinole. So, and we still have family out there in El Sabrante. Or as we like, we call it El Sabroni. So I have an affinity torch your school district.
Well, great, thank you.
So I guess let me just get started. So we prepared this slide deck for the superintendent's. And then now it's about two weeks old, so we'll just kind of verbally update what we need to. And I'm not sure how you guys wanna do it. If you wanna ask questions in between or start a chat for the end, whatever works for your team is fine with us. Our goal today is kinda just kinda go over what's going on with the COVID vaccine? What's going on with COVID? What is the status of the vaccines? And then how do you all prepare to get vaccinated? Dr. Oliver and I were at, inspired by the talk that we gave to the superintendent's. We were at Pittsburgh's Parkside Elementary this morning, giving vaccines out in the parking lot. And we want to come to your neck of the woods too. So we kinda talk about that. Next slide, please. So kind of the general principle is to keep our society safe. We need to keep the healthcare workers safe. That is what happened in Italy and New York is when the healthcare workers go down, then everything kind of falls apart. So healthcare workers, for the large, for the most part are, have been vaccinated. Next slide, please. So we're gonna kinda talk about COVID. And how do you guys talk to your team and your staff? And then how do you get everyone ready to get vaccinated? Next slide, please. And I'm sorry that I'm going fast. But it's, it is eight forty-five, so I know you guys, everyone's working hard and long. So where are we now? So if we can go to the next slide. And we got, we can, I think we can share this slide deck as a PDF. But I think people understand what SARS, what COVID is. It's the generation of the bird flu that came out. So, or the SARS virus that was here about 10 years ago. So it, it, we do know that people have higher risks for severe symptoms as they are, as they, as they are older. And prevention is the best thing that we can do right now, which is social distancing and wearing masks and washing your hands. Next slide, please. We ran this a few months ago. This is a very telling slide. So what it is, is the Social Vulnerability Index, which incorporates diversity, racial diversity, economic diversity, transportation, lack of access, healthcare, lack of access, language, lack of access, and the darker gray and black areas are the areas which have the, were most social vulnerability. And, and red is where we've had the most hospitalizations from COVID. Our most infection rates from COVID. It's the same for hospitalizations too. And it, this, this shouldn't shock anybody, but it's, it, this, the data is real. People who have less access to healthcare have been hit with COVID a lot harder. Next slide, please. So where are we in terms of tiers? And I'll hand off to Dr. Oliver. We are, we've done, well, we've, we've been in Phase 1A where we've done healthcare workers. And we've gone to senior, senior living facilities and been, gone there to vaccinate and we've done the staff there. We're currently doing vaccinating seventy-five and older. And the county is at sixty-five, but most of the health systems are doing seventy-five. If you go to the health systems, we are, we at John Muir are hoping to get to sixty-five next Monday. And you'll see in gray, we should be at essential workers. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But the, the, the reality is there, there is not, there are not enough vaccines. And so the progression of stages is limited by production of vaccine. And so maybe we can go to the next slide and Dr. Oliver can kind of take it from there.
Yes, and so, you know, what we're hoping is that eventually as more vaccines become available and we're able to progress into the second part of Phase 1B, we'll be able to reach out to more essential workers, which includes people in education like you folks, emergency services, food and agriculture grocery store workers, those sorts of folks who are making our everyday services run. People in transportation, et cetera, et cetera. And then hopefully by the spring, we'll be able to catch up and we'll be able to start vaccinating people ages fifty to sixty-four, those with high-risk medical conditions who are under the age of sixty-five, and then other essential workers as well. Next slide, please. And so the way that vaccine supplies actually work, so the doses are provided by the states to Kaiser and to Sutter Health. And then Contra Costa County provides the vaccines to John Muir Health. Generally speaking, the way that those then get distributed out to patients is that John Muir will vaccinate John Muir patients, Kaiser, Kaiser patients, Sutter, Sutter patients, and so on and so forth. Contra Costa County will then cover all of those who are, are on Contra Costa Health Plan or CCHP Medi-Cal, or those who are uninsured at county site. They've also helped to partner with us to do some of the vaccine sites that we were doing, such as with Parkside this morning. Next slide, please. And so then it becomes a question of actual logistics and education. Next slide. So this gets into how the COVID vaccine actually works. Is it safe? And delving into some of the questions and myths around the vaccine. Next slide. So the science of how it works, it is an mRNA vaccine. What that actually means is you take a small part of the code that encodes for the actual virus itself and turns it, turn it into a vaccine. That vaccine is then injected into the patients and then goes into the patient's cells. Those cells then recognize that part of the code for the virus as something foreign. They produce it as a protein in the cell. And the cell says, hey, that's not part of my normal protein or my normal DNA or RNA. So I'm gonna create an antibody response to it and recognize it as something foreign that needs to be removed. And so what that does is it creates an immune response. So therefore, that's how your body builds the immunity to the coronavirus. So then if you were to come into contact with the actual coronavirus, your body would recognize the protein on the coronavirus and say, hey, that's that foreign thing, and we'll try to get rid of it. Next slide, please. So what does it mean if a vaccine offers ninety-five percent efficacy? This is the number that you will hear associated with the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine generally. And so this means that vaccines will prevent ninety-five percent of serious infection, meaning that about five percent of folks may still get infected. However, if you don't have a vaccine, there is no protection other than social distancing measures. So hand washing, social distancing and face masks. Next slide. And so both the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines have been approved by the FDA. They have gone through pretty rigorous clinical trials. And you can see the breakdown of distribution of gender and ethnicity and race in the trials here. What they essentially determined was that the benefits of the vaccine vastly outweigh the harms of being infected with coronavirus, particularly because older folks and people with severe underlying medical conditions like diabetes and high blood pressure are at increased risk for having a very severe infection and bad outcomes as a result. Next slide. So a couple of myths about this. One that I've seen commonly, especially on social media, is that the vaccine will change the DNA or your DNA. This is, is not true. Essentially, the RNA in the vaccine never actually gets into the nucleus of the cell. It never comes into contact with your DNA, so it won't do anything to the DNA of yourselves. There's also been concern that the vaccine was rushed and isn't safe. This also isn't true. It went through all of the same developmental processes that any other vaccine would go through to get FDA approval. And additionally, the type of vaccine, the fact that it is an mRNA vaccine, while relatively new technology have been under development for many years prior to this. Next slide. Is it true that you won't need to wear a mask after getting the vaccine? No, we still would recommend you wearing a mask. In fact, we're gonna recommend that everybody continues to wear a mask until the vast majority of the population's been vaccinated. That's because the vaccine is not a hundred percent effective. And we don't know if people could carry it and pass it on to other people, the virus on to other people, even if they are vaccinated. The vaccines don't have microchips in them and there's no evidence that they can cause any infertility. And then I'll toss it on over to Dr. Nath for the next slide.
So there's a lot of concern about the variants. And we have a lot of concern about the variants too. The things to know about variants is variants are normal. There was a guy today, they found, who was hospitalized, who had forty mutations of the coronavirus when they did his sampling because of how long he was actually infected. Variants are normal. So sometimes variants will make the virus more, more potent and it can be spread easier, which is what we think is happening with the UK variant. Sometimes it can be more fatal. And the real question is, when the mutations are happening, does it happen to such a degree that the vaccine that we have is different enough that, than the variant? In which case, we need a new vaccine. So in a sense, we're kind of in this global race against a normal, normal process, which is viral mutation. And the ones, if we can go to the next slide, please. The ones that we really are worried about is the South African one. I think of the Brazilian one, we're concerned about too. The current vaccines, Moderna and Pfizer, have been shown to be effective against them. The J and J vaccine, a little less so, but I do think the trials were more thorough. The AstraZeneca, you guys have probably seen in South Africa, was shown to be not as effective. So they kind of held off in terms of government administration there. So yes, we're worried about it. We're not worried about the current vaccines. But we need to kind of get moving as a country in the next few months. We can, we don't have six months to wait. We have to be, we have to be there sooner than later. So on that bright note, so what, how do we, what do we do? So if we can go to the next slide, please. And I, I know there's lots of things on the agenda, so we're gonna talk as fast as we can. We're hoping we get the Johnson and Johnson vaccine approved. It is a one-shot vaccine. And the data shows it's a little less effective. But if you think about it, if you do a booster, it probably would get a high number here. The things to remember are when we get vaccine, we get what the county gives us. So sometimes we get Pfizer, sometimes we get Moderna. Today, we had Moderna. And people do need to have a second shot for these two, separated by either three or four weeks, depending on what you get. If you're a few days after, you're okay. You don't wanna be before. But if you're three, four days after to get your second shot, it's, it's fine. You do have some protection after the first one, but the, the trials are based on getting a second shot. Next slide, please. You cannot, you're not supposed to interchange them. If people do mix and match, we don't know what to tell you in terms of results. And the studies were done with people not taking Tylenol and Ibuprofen prior to the vaccine and not getting another vaccine. The flu shot was not permitted between, before fourteen days and other shots by twenty-eight days. So one thing to know is if you're going to your doctor and the doctor says, hey, you know, you wanna do your pneumonia shot or you wanna do your shingle shot? Cause you know, you're fifty-five, you wanna do that shot? This is a time to say, you know what? Let me hold off because I, I wanna make sure I don't mess up my COVID vaccine timing. So in our clinic, we are advising patients to kind of hold off on, on vaccines that are not mandatory. So let's go to the next slide. Let's kind of go fast. What's the most common things? It hurts. I, I felt, I, I'm kind of a wimp, but I thought it hurt. And after the second one, I kind of felt off. So I felt like achy and icky. I, I didn't throw up, I just didn't feel good. Take Ibuprofen and it goes away. Dr. Oliver, how was your experience?
So I had side effects to both doses that were a little bit stronger than Dr. Nath. And I mostly had body aches and headache after the first one. And then after the second dose, I felt more under the weather and I had a fever too, but it lasted for a maximum of twenty-four hours. And then I was totally back to normal.
Yeah. Can we go to the next slide, please? So, and we, you, you'll get all these information when you get your vaccine. The Moderna does have a little bit of a rash that may appear. And hydrocortone works for that. Just, we recommend people drink a lot of fluids. We don't, we don't recommend people take time off work. We all, we all go to work the next day. We just have some Tylenol in our backpack and, you know, just in case we need it. Next slide, please. There are, what we do recommend is when people have questions, is to call their doctor before they're gonna get the shot. You kind of wanna minimize the time that you're sitting in the vaccining, vaccine clinic with people like us. You, you don't wanna be around people like us for the next few months because you wanna minimize your contact with healthcare workers. you want to minimize your contact with healthcare workers. The main thing that people might be allergic to are, there is polyethylene glycol, which is the component in Miralax. So if you, if you happen to have an allergy to Miralax, you probably cannot get this vaccine. But for the most part, we don't see reactions, even with people who have had anaphylactic problems with food and medicines. We do kind of have a 30-minute wait time for people who have had severe reactions. Next slide, please. And if you have ongoing chronic conditions, you can still get the vaccine. We, the numbers are about 30%. If you're on an immunosuppressant medication for something like lupus or chemotherapy, you might not get a stronger reaction, but you'll still get a reaction, a meaning you'll get a antibody response. And it has not been studied in pregnant women. We've had some colleagues who are breastfeeding or trying to get pregnant. They, they have gotten the vaccine. Because it is so safe, I think people are feeling confident about it, but that's something that everyone has to make their own decision about that. Next slide, please. And we kind of touched on this. It is safe for people who are immunocompromised, just may not work as well, but it will work. So it's better than 0%, 70% is better than 0%. And then I'll hand off to Dr. Oliver for the next slide.
So even if you've had COVID-19 before, it is still recommended that you get the vaccine. The CDC does have a recommendation of 90 days from the beginning of symptoms or positive tests, but there's no, you know, official strict guidelines, so you can get the vaccine after having COVID. Next slide. Okay, and so then it comes down to how do we actually get the vaccine to patients? Next slide. And we can go on to the next slide too. And so we kind of talked about this before. This is just kind of the tiers. Again, we can go on to the next slide. So as of right now, where most folks can get the vaccine is generally through your healthcare provider. For most people, they are being contacted by John Muir, Kaiser or Sutter for appointments. Contra Costa County is also providing vaccines to folks who are uninsured or members of CCHP. And then with John Muir, we're trying to vaccinate all of our essential workers and folks aged 75 and up as soon as possible. And, you know, part of our program is to now trying to get into some of our more vulnerable communities to reach folks who don't have access. Next slide. And so this is just again, a review of the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine, which are both of the ones that we may have available. Next slide. And again, remember that these vaccines are not interchangeable, that we do recommend that you get the same dose, the same type of vaccine, either Pfizer or Moderna for both shots. Next slide. Okay, so in order to vaccinate as many people as possible, what we're currently doing is scheduling appointments for vaccines. We're not taking walk-ins. Part of this is to make sure that we actually have accurate vaccine allocation, given that the vials of the vaccines come in have multiple doses. So we want to make sure that we don't have too many or too few and none of our doses of vaccine go to waste. We've basically been contacting people through a number of different ways, either through their health record, through email, text or phone. And so prior to the appointment for vaccines, we're hoping that folks can just help prepare everybody. So helping to answer questions before the appointment to minimize time that they have to spend being exposed to us healthcare workers. Next slide. We do have a couple of forms that they need to fill out. This is a copy of the consent form. It goes over a lot of the health questions that we asked before. So any serious allergies, any underlying conditions that would dampen your immune response, any history of COVID in the past, et cetera. Next slide. When we vaccinate folks, we do give them a vaccination record card. So we will have both the first and the second dose listed on here. And then after their first dose, what's very important is the back of the card that has the appointment time for their second dose of the vaccine because we want people to come back so that they're fully vaccinated. Next slide. This is one tool that is, that the CDC is using to help track different reactions that folks are having to the vaccine. So it's called Be Safe. It's a smartphone-based tool that basically uses text messaging and web surveys to allow you to input any side effects that you might be having so that we can continually track that data and have more up-to-date information on how people are responding to getting the vaccine. Next slide. So once you're vaccinated, as a reminder, please continue to protect yourself and others. It's still really important while we're still in the early stages of rolling out this vaccine that everybody continue to maintain all of the precautions that we've been taking. So that means continuing to wear a mask, avoiding crowds, washing hands, staying six feet apart. And then following any CDC guidelines for travel or any guidances that your workplace may have in effect. Next slide. And then if you are exposed to someone with COVID-19, these are general recommendations that apply to everybody vaccinated or not. But essentially, the recommendations are to isolate yourself for 14 days. If you do develop symptoms and you do want to quarantine yourself entirely, get tested. If your test comes back positive or from the onset of symptoms, we recommend that you continue quarantine for 10 days. If you are asymptomatic and you test negative, we recommend isolation for 14 days, after which point you can lift those isolation precautions and go back to more normal activities. If you live with someone who is ill with COVID, we also recommend being quarantined for 14 days after your household member no longer needs to be isolated. Next slide. All right. And so this is kind of starting to wrap up a little bit, but this is a really powerful tool that we hope is really going to help us end this pandemic sooner rather than later and help us get back to some sense of normalcy. So we really want to help you return to more normal operations by providing this education, helping to answer questions about the vaccine. So that when folks are offered it, that they will more readily accept it. Next slide. And I'll toss it back to Dr. Naff.
Okay, thank you. So so how can we help? One of the things we want to do is just try to get out to as many groups, teachers, our bus drivers, our food workers, as possible, so that everyone can get ready. Next slide, please. We do have up-to-date information on the website. We update stuff on variants, on supplies, on how to make appointments. And I don't know if this is the last slide here. Yeah, question. So I just want to bring up one more thing. And I'm going to, I think, put all the pressure to Superintendent Duffy here. So one thing that is new is in our efforts in partnering with the county, the county has allocated us some vaccines. We are going to be, because as we, as you guys know, we have an affinity towards West Contra Costa. Cost Contra Costa now. So we're going to be in San Pablo, I believe, on Saturday. We're figuring out the location. We are, we are not allowed to go to the essential workers tier, but we can do people who are residents of Contra Costa County, 65 and above, with a preference for 75 and above if, while we're scheduling. And we are allowed to do non-Kaiser patients. So we wanted to open it up to your district. We did this with the Pittsburgh District for today. If you do have employees who are 65 or above, 75 or above, don't have Kaiser, meaning you can have John Muir or Medi-Cal or Medicare or uninsured, undocumented, we can, we can, we're allowed to do it. And have to have a residence in the county. So those are the kind of things I have to, I have to submit their addresses. So if that, if you do have some teachers or food workers or custodians or anyone, 60, I'm assuming at 75, most people are retiring, but there's some really dedicated teachers. So if there are people in that age group, please let us know and we'll get you in on Saturday. And it's going to be Dr. Oliver and myself and some other docs doing this on a Saturday. It will be very cold, I understand. But we will, we will get you guys in. We care about the teachers, our teachers a lot. So
And not to interrupt, because I'm sure everybody's like, where, where? So I'm working that out with Sharon Jenkins now. So it's probably will be in San, one of the San Pablo schools, either Helms or Richmond. And we'll confirm that tomorrow and then start getting that out. So thank you for, for, for being there for us.
Yeah, it's, it's very fluid. So everyone, thank you for your patience with us. That's why everyone's called a patient. But we will hold, I'm going to hold numbers for you guys. Just get us, you know, so those are the only conditions I've been given is 65, non-Kaiser and have to live in Contra Costa. So I'm, I'm hoping we can, some people, we can get some of you all in.
Should we move towards questions?
Is, is that the end of your presentation, sir?
Oh, yeah. I'm so old. You call me sir. I can't believe this. Okay.
I call everybody that. It's, it's not you, but you are distinguished. You deserve a sir. So we are going to move on to questions. Board, I'm going to ask you all to just pretend that we're in a study session today with this particular item. So I'm going to ask you all to limit your questions to three. There are seven of us up here, which means that we could potentially ask up to 21 questions if we include the student board members. So and that also means that when we get to the discussion section of this, that we won't do that. We're going to pretend, like I said, we're in the study session. We're going to start with Mrs. Reckler and up to three questions.
Great, thank you. So first, thank you to the two of you for being here and thank you for your most generous offer. You guys are great. I really, really appreciate that. The first question is, if you look into your COVID crystal ball, what do you think the overall timing is for educators right here in West Contra Costa to get vaccines? We're going to start this Saturday. When do you think this is going to get really pedal to the metal? And we're going to be moving this through our community?
Okay, my honest opinion. I think the politics have and will override the science on most things. So it's going to be when we have vaccines available. And I, that I don't know. So we literally find out how many vaccines we get once a week. The county finds out from the state how many vaccines it gets once a week. So it's really when the vaccine production ramps up in on a federal level, and then it gets distributed to the states. The reason we want to make sure that the teachers are readied and food service workers are readied and our bus drivers and our, you know, our frontline people are ready is I've never been good at predicting politics. So the goal is just to have everyone ready. And when they, when the supply comes in, which we will know one week ahead of most people, that's when it's going to happen. But I wish I had the crystal ball to let everyone know. I think my, my guess is we'll get like a one-week lead time and then you'll get notified. And it'll be a scramble. So that, you know, the reason we're here is so everyone's kind of ready, so it's not a scramble. But I've not been good at predicting the political waves of the last year. So I'll so all we're doing is trying to get people ready.
Okay, thank you. The second question is, why does the second vaccine hurt more than the first?
That is a really good question. The reason has to do with the fact that you've already started to amount some bit of immune response. So when your body gets that second dose, it recognizes the mRNA and it goes, ah, that's that foreign thing. So what you're feeling is your body's own immune response reacting to the vaccine.
Okay. And then the final question is, in an average year, what is the, the flu vaccine? How effective is that in an average year?
So it varies year to year. Sometimes you'll have like 50 to 60% effectiveness, sometimes 20. We've had some years where it's 20% effective, I think maybe two years ago. So the fact that this is at 95 is kind of, it was shocking to everybody in a, in a positive light. So so, yeah, but usually the flu is not, it's not close to 70, 80, 90%. It's not even, it's usually below that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I'll save time for everybody else. Thank, thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips, and thank you, doctors, for being here and for your presentation. I learned quite a bit about the vaccine. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about this, like the discrepancies between counties, like some counties that like are moving faster than others. And, and sometimes they're even already vaccinating educators, yet we hear it's going to take months, right? So why, why is that discrepancy happening throughout, you know, the state?
So I can take that one. Politics is one answer. And it's how the state just, so it's the state allocation formula. And so the older formula was based on age and percent of people in poverty in the county. And that was in December. And now they're moving to age, so number of people in a certain, in older age groups. And an index called the HPI, the Healthy Places Index. And so it's, it's based on like the zip codes that you have in the county. And in your, and we're all Contra Costa, so it's the, and having the number of the lowest quartile of zip codes in terms of kind of that map I showed you with the grayscale. It's a similar thing, except they use blue and so, but it's similar. So the counties that have more underserved areas will get more vaccines. But again, that changed, you know, a month ago, so it might change again. So everyone's trying their best. But you, you, you see it because the formulas change and formulas change on the back, the backside of what we see on the news.
Thank you for that. So my next question is, majority of our employees actually have Kaiser. So would it, would there be any discrepancy in kind of the information you shared because of that? Like, are there any big differences for Kaiser users?
There shouldn't be significant differences. They, I'm not sure exactly which vaccine Kaiser has, but it would either be Pfizer or Moderna. And so it would be the same information in terms of how the vaccine works, when you would get vaccinated and when you would need to come back for your second dose.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is really just more about how can we partner with you to support our community a little more?
That's a great question. Thank you for that. You know, our goal is to, so we're, we're a little selfish. We don't like to see people sick. We, you know, a lot of us went into this because we like people, you know, we like to help people. And we're also selfish because we are, we and our coworkers are working really hard. And the, the earlier this thing ends, the better for all of us. Unlike you guys, we heard that, you know, people have never worked this hard in education before. So there is a selfish motivation because we just want this thing to get, to go away. What, what would be helpful in, in, in terms of how we partner is you know, how do we, how do we reach out to those people who are kind of ignored by the system? So that, you know, people who are in the shadows. You know, a lot of our concerns at John Muir in East County has been for undocumented. But to say, hey, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a truck that's going to be there. Can we, can we help you sign up? Because the, you know, those people have they've been scared. Our patients have been scared. And Sharon promised, made me promise I wouldn't go into politics. So things are different, but people have been scared. And so it's, it's saying, hey, you have a chance. There's someone who's going to come out and help you. So, you know, it's, and if you can get their trust and say, can I send your name and your phone number? Because you're over 65, you're uninsured. Or, hey, you work really hard, you know, this is there for you. That, that's, that would be really cool because it's hard for us to reach. Or, hey, you work really hard, you know, this is there for you. That, that's, that would be really cool because it's hard for us to reach them. We could, we only can reach people who we have records of, but it's these other, all these other people who who, who need help and need access. So get, helping them get the access would be very cool.
Okay, thank you both for being here tonight. President Phillips, so some last question.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Christian, you have up to three questions.
Yeah, thank you, President Phillips. The question I'm gonna put out there is is, at some point, will these, would a vaccine become like mandated, like the immunization?
I, so I don't think we're gonna, we're not a country where we mandate things. But it'll be highly recommended and it could be something that gets, that is mandated, required for travel. I could see that as a thing. So I don't think it's going to be mandated, just like vaccines, you know, you know, like measles for schools. It took a long time to get that through. So my guess is it's not going to be mandated. The goal is just to get as many people as possible to get to that herd immunity level.
Okay. That's, that's all the question I have.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smith falls, up to three.
So my question is, you stated that you don't know what the vaccine does to pregnant women. Can you tell me something that makes me feel better about that statement?
So, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say that, that's a tough one, because unfortunately, the data is lacking because these studies were not performed in pregnant populations. In general, this is true for many, many diseases. And but what I will say is, anecdotally, what I've heard so far has been very reassuring in terms of friends and colleagues and patients of mine who have received the vaccine and have done very well in their pregnancy and with, and postpartum and breastfeeding. Whether that holds true nationally, I'm hoping to see the data soon. And then I'll let Dr. Nath join in.
I'll just echo what Dr. Oliver said, that usually when studies are done, pregnant people are excluded. And, you know, just kind of the larger picture. I, I don't know. Most studies are done with certain populations. The, these studies were really interesting that they, they made an effort to include different ethnic groups and different racial groups. It's not always the case. Sometimes you'll have studies where they'll study, you know, a, a high percentage of male, male of one particular ethnic group. And then you extrapolate the data to everyone else. And they made a, they made a really concerted effort not to do that, which is, which was very reassuring to a lot of us. But, you know, pregnant women are usually excluded from most studies unless it's a medicine for pregnancy. So we're, we're gonna have to wait. But our colleagues who are nursing, they've gotten vaccinated and obviously did a lot of research. So as far as we know, things have gone well, but this is, it is anecdotal.
Can you tell me, can you tell me about how you have tested or not tested fertility in men or women? Have, have vaccinated people then said, okay, go out and try to have a baby? And you said, oh, okay, you can, or, oh, no, you can't. Tell me about that process.
All right, okay, I'll do this one. Right, we're trying to like go back and forth. So again, this was not an endpoint in the trial. So they didn't vaccinate people then and then see what the rate of the fertility in the couples was. So, so we, we can't honestly answer that question. There were, there've been a lot of rumors that people in certain places have been vaccinated then, and then they couldn't get pregnant. And the, the, the timing doesn't make sense because you, you don't say someone's infertile until they've been trying. Well, there are other high schoolers on here, they can underhear this stuff. So until people have been trying for a year, you don't say someone, a couple is infertile. So you can't, that, that, that's just not possible to have said someone's infertile when the trials haven't been a year, if that makes sense.
It does. So on your slide, we don't know if it affects fertility or not. That's the clear answer. We don't know yet.
We don't know. But the rumor that it definitely affects it negatively is not true.
Okay. And, and I think that is my last question. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, Board, for adhering to the questions. I really appreciate you. Ms. Emiliano, you can ask up to three questions if you have them.
Um, I have a question. For those students who are older than sixteen who have family members who are essential workers and are consistently exposed to the virus, what phase of the vaccine distribution would they be a part of?
May I clarify? Are you asking about students or about the family members?
Um, the students that are, that live in households with family members who are consistently exposed to the virus.
Um, so that's also a good question. I think for, for these healthy young students who, you know, even if you are at home with those who are, you know, essential workers exposed to the vaccine, and you will still be in somewhat lower tier, lower than the one C that we have at this time. I also believe that the vaccine at this point is approved for, I wanna say ages sixteen and above. Dr. Nath, I think you can correct me if I'm wrong about that. So we also don't have the, the data or the approval to use it yet in children under the age of sixteen.
That was my only question.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Leon.
Uh, no, I don't have any further questions. I just wanna thank the, the doctors for providing this information. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. I don't have any questions either. I would like to thank the doctors for coming in today and sharing with us. I'd also like to thank Mr. Duffy for taking the initiative to invite them. This is very helpful for our community. I know, Mr. Duffy, you're gonna follow up with the larger community around options that they have, have offered today. So that said, this item is closed. Again, we greatly appreciate the time that you spent with us on this.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
President Phillips, are we not doing public comment after this one, or?
You are right. So we are gonna do public comment. I'm sorry. Thank you for the catch. That's starting now. So I kind of loused that one up. I know Avra had a hand up. Now two have gone up. Going once, going twice. All right. We have three hands up for public comment. Guadalupe Anyana is the last person. Thank you for the catch. Madam Clerk.
So Avra, when you're allowed to unmute, please identify yourself with the first and last name. Avra, you're, should be able to unmute now. Hello? Avra, are you there? Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to you. Gabrielle McLeedy, you may unmute.
Hello, again, Gabrielle McLeedy. I'm a first grade instructor at Verde Elementary and representative of UTR as the elementary director. It was really great to hear reinforcement of all the things I've learned about the vaccine recently. I think the biggest question, and myself, as Demetrio brought up, I'm on Kaiser, so I'm waiting to hear when I can get the vaccine because I would really love to and get back in my classroom. That's my ultimate goal. So I think the main question with the county now is just when can teachers get the vaccine? So we can start being in the classroom, so we can be safe, so we can know we're not going to spread this to the kids who spread it to their parents, to their grandparents, because I cannot imagine the guilt if a parent or so, something happened to someone and I knew I had given it to a kid. Um, so I really appreciate you guys being here tonight to educate us about this. And I really hope this school board will press on the county to get us vaccinated, just like, oh, USD Oakland has really pushed to get their teachers vaccinated, so we can restart the education in the classroom, just like everyone wants, because we want to be with our kids more than, or the same as parents want their kids to be back with us. So thank you so much and good night.
Let's try Avra again. Avra, can you unmute? Avra, are you there?
That hand was up for a while, even sort of pre.
Okay. I, I just don't think their microphone is working because it shows that they're unmuted, but it doesn't seem to be coming back. So Guadalupe Anyana. You may try.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, I wanna thank, you know, the presenters. I think it was great information. I really appreciate having them on. I think a lot of my concern has been the information given. I know I heard, you know, them talking about, you know, Kaiser's, vaccinating Kaiser members, the county's doing county. But there's a lot of miscommunication, I think, from different places when it comes to like vaccinations. Kaiser's, you know, still doing, I think, the first tier. So they're only doing seventy-five and over. You know, the county started doing sixty-five years and older and they told us that even if you were a Kaiser member, you could always sign on with the county to get it through the county. So I think there's a lot of information out there, but I think it's really confusing. And, you know, just, I think, you know, moving forward, I think we need to do our part to make sure that we are, you know, giving clear information as we're getting it in, especially to our community. Which seems, I am a Richmond resident, so it seems that, you know, Richmond has really high numbers of COVID cases. So just to be able to then bring that information out, you know, really clearly as we're getting it in, I think would be beneficial to the community, especially, like I said, with, you know, information being put out there and different information from different sources. But I thank you for the presentation. It was great.
All right, one last chance. We'll go Avra, see if this works, since the hand came back up. Can you unmute? I'm sorry, it just doesn't seem to be working for you this evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Aurelio, thank you to all of the people who have called in, not just on this item, but who called in tonight. Your comments have been helpful. So now this item is really closed because we're not gonna do the discussion. We're gonna pretend like this is a study session on this item. We are going to move to the next item, which is E3. I wanna remind the board that we have three items left. This one that we're going on to, and then two action items. So please be, you know, cognizant of the time as we move forward. So item E3.
Thank you, President Phillips. I'm going to work to share my screen and bring up the presentation. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the Food Services Program. And I'll get this into presentation mode. We're gonna try to go quickly to get into the questions there. We, tonight are gonna talk about where we've been, some of the feedback we've received from families, some of the changes that we've made along the way, the challenges that we still have. We definitely have some thank yous we wanna end with for some people that have really done quite a bit to make a difference for our community. The amount of food insecurity in Contra Costa County, especially in West County and the areas we serve, continues to grow. As you can see, the CalFresh households are hovering at forty-five, forty thousand all the way through. Even as unemployment goes down, it still makes a big difference as things go. We will also be having Barbara Jellison come in in a moment, and if we can get Veronica Diaz promoted, she'll be speaking a little bit on the Teamsters part at the end of this. So we started in March of 2020 with curbside service at several sites, five days a week. We found that we were getting differing delivery amounts. Folks couldn't make it every day, so we started to make adjustments throughout where we tried to get into different pieces there as we go. We've had different offerings, as you can see, with the advertising, the types of products have gone through and everything else. We've really worked to get expanded sourced farms and suppliers to bring in organic, locally-produced foods that are of high nutritional value. We've really worked on education with surveys, social media, focusing on making a difference. And so we're gonna have Barbara Jellison come in and talk a little bit about what the community found.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you very much, Dr. Wold. Good evening, Superintendent Duffy. I'm very happy to be here to be able to continue the presentations on Food Service Department. These changes over the last eleven months, our focus was really on supporting our staff, which I really wanna do a big shout out to Food Services and the hard work that they've been able to do to support our families in the community during this pandemic. They are, you know, essential and we wouldn't have been, you know, I'm not able to do it, or we wouldn't be able to serve our communities without them. So shout out to them. So when we make these changes on August sixth, when we're preparing for the start of school here, we sent out a parent survey. So these surveys not only support what we're offering our families, the feedback and how it supports them, but also how to improve our staff is working and make it safer for them. So we wanted to get feedback on, you know, how many people we're serving, how many people were coming to pick up those meals? And the best pickup times and days for them to come and pick up the meals. We also, oh, next slide. Second, uh, survey was sent out on November second. And we saw that out of our responses, there are over nine hundred of them. We had seventy-eight percent of the families let us know that, you know, we're coming to pick up our meals over the last couple of months. And that isn't Thursdays, we're working well for them. And then also how they were picking up their meals and whether they wanted pre-packed produce and half-cup portions, like we were doing over the summer. Or wanted to have a variety, bigger variety of produce they could prepare as a family at home, which would also make it easier on our staff to pack the bags or the boxes for the families. On February, because of the November second survey and moving into the boxes, we decided to move to one-day curbside service, which would not only help our staff, but also help the parents. And the response from the parents last week was that eighty-nine percent appreciated that, you know, we're picking up curbside meals and that Thursdays was working for them one day a week as opposed to two days a week prior to that. And then off to February fifth, oh, next slide, I'm sorry. The best feedback that we got was that ninety-five percent of the families enjoyed the contents of our boxes with included, you know, a greater variety of locally sourced items that they could reproduce as a family and that lessened the work on our staff, preparing the meals for the curbside service. Next. Oh, next slide, sorry. Working. So one of the our most, I mean, our most important part of our program is our staff and safety is our priority, not only for our staff, but also for our families that are coming to pick it, pick up the meals. We focused heavily on distancing protocols. We've worked with district nurses. We've created a lot of signage to remind people about the distancing protocols. We've created sanitizing stations to make PPE available to all staff. We've created a training video and we've also We've created a training video, and we've also transitioned from our staff placing the boxes In the trunks of families to having the families Get out and pick up the boxes after our staff has placed it on the tables and moved back, so the parents can come and pick it up and put it in their trunks, Keeping our staff safe and also the families that are picking up the boxes. Also, the equipment, we've ordered pallet jacks, we have training, so we can keep our Staff safe and also working better, not harder. And then our CSO partnership, That is one of the most important ones. They keep the traffic flowing, they keep our staff safe, they make sure that the distancing protocols Are in place, and together, we've been able to do a tremendous work serving our communities. So I want to pass it back to Dr. Wald to finish.
So, what you can see is the demand keeps rising, and with that demand, Our folks are on the front lines every day, really making a difference. And as Barbara emphasized, We couldn't do this without those partnerships, and It's our entire focus to really make sure that we're doing right with our employees, to do right for the need of our community. And so with that, we've, we're really trying to partner with labor, and I'd like Veronica Diaz To come in on the next slide and talk about some of the areas that we've had some challenges and some of the things that we're doing together.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak on the labor perspective of it this evening. I would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to thank the food service workers Who are going home with cuts and scrapes and bruises from warehouse work that you frankly did not anticipate. I see you and your community thanks you. I want to thank Dr. Wald and Ms. Jellison for facilitating a food service worker meeting on January 22nd, In which all food service workers were invited to ask questions about anything and everything Having to do with the current food distribution program, and where we were able to voice a lot of concerns that were addressed, Including the need for additional staffing. The district did a lot of work, HR did a lot of work to call every single yard supervisor that we could find Who was not currently working to assign them to aid with food service work right now. They have also been calling food service subs to try to place them within pods safely where they are permanently assigned for the time being. We have received gear as far as rain boots and rain jackets goes. Those are very much appreciated and were very much needed at the beginning of the rainy season. Some sites have also received tents and other shelters. Barbara has been working creatively to try to fashion the shelters up against sides of buildings Wherever the staff can to try to maximize coverage from the rain. And the new protocol of having community members pick up the boxes has really aided in keeping people dry And warm during those rainy days. I really want to thank the district for investing in electric pallet jacks. I think that was overdue. And in training people to be able to use those safely. That being said, there is still work to be done. I think one of the biggest issues folks are facing is just general fatigue. This department has done so much with so little. I, Barbara has heard me say for years now that I believe that we were understaffed before the pandemic, and even now, more so. So people Are tired. We want to think creatively about how we can give people breaks, Including, and I have brought it up a few times in our labor management meetings, sending people home early when you can. Especially within the context of a pandemic, if there's no need to keep people on site, why are we keeping them on site? Allowing folks that have office or data entry work to work from home when they can. Because, again, we are still in a pandemic. Why are we keeping people on site if they do not need to be on site? The district is working on getting more PPE and replenishing it as folks go through it, including gloves, masks, sanitizers. We recently found out that the district has automatic sanitizer dispensers that I think Ms. Jellison has now requested for a few of her sites, which is wonderful. Sharing that, sharing those tools is so important. I, as I mentioned, we've been participating in monthly labor management meetings. And we have brought up a few of those suggestions a few more, a few months running now. One of those suggestions is soliciting feedback and working with the delivery drivers to create a manageable delivery schedule So that people are not packing and then repacking the same boxes a couple of times a week. The space to speak and be heard is important, but what is more telling of our labor relation is the action or inaction Rather, following these conversations. I also want to encourage the district to implement safety protocols now, as opposed to when we are facing a deadline to reopen schools. I want to point out to the recent agreement that was reached between educators and San Francisco Unified. Some of those measures included district support and advocacy for vaccine prioritization for all district staff, As well as regular testing for staff. We are your partners in advocacy. Please take us up on that offer to join you in calling for such supports For your workers. I just want to end by saying that we need to break out of the mentality of doing the bare minimum or of meeting the minimum suggested standards for safety, And start thinking about how we can go above and beyond in this area for workers As, as this is going to impact our preparedness for receiving the students that so eagerly want to go back to in-person instruction.
So, we want to thank Veronica for really bringing to light some of these important conversations as we go forward. But we want to end with really thanking the face of our community That is making a difference every day. These are the workers that Veronica was just talking about, that are every day stepping up, making a difference. The food service staff has already We are about to cross ten million meals. By April, we are going to hit fifteen million meals served in fifteen distribution sites. So when you think about the population of West County and how many meals that is, We are doing a Herculean lift, and it's the people there, and I've left it on the screen for a minute Because we want to remember that behind every meal is that face there And the effort that they're putting together. And as Veronica talked, we still have work to do. We're actually going to meet on custodial cleaning protocols and talk about it before we even get to reopening. We're going to continue to find ways to partner to make this right for our community as we go. These, again, are some of our partners there. We can't do it without the safety team and the CSOs, the district nurses, custodial maintenance operations. It's not just the food service workers that make this happen every day. And the list keeps going as we go forward. If we had had more time, we would have made it a slideshow, but then there's people behind the scenes doing the work. The net result is, we're really here to serve, and coming up in April, fifteen million, We're just going to front-load that we're going to be focusing on not only honoring the workers, but honoring the fact that we're serving The community. With that, we'll take any questions that the board might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. This was actually Trustee Christian's item. He requested this, so on this one, we're going to start with him. Mr. Christian, questions?
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. Thank you for the presentation, and that way it gave light to everything what's going on, and And the question that is directed is, how do we continue to build, you know, make sure The needs of the workers are being taken care of and making sure that the workers Because if you mess up all the workers, then you won't have nobody to do anything. So how, what are we going to do to make sure that the work is going to be taken care of?
So I'm going to pass this answer to Barbara, because she and I have talked about her listening, and Barbara?
Thank you. I think, you know, continuing with, like Veronica Diaz brought up with our voices meeting once a month. It's an area where anybody, whether SSA, Teamsters, anyone in the department can voice concerns. And then we can follow up on Problem solving and work together for resolution. Sometimes, you know, I don't know, in different sites, there might be specific needs. And, you know, sometimes people feel more comfortable now bringing them up during these Voices meetings. Also, after last week, we decided that we were going to meet in, with each of the pods With SSA representative and the Teamsters and get feedback. We did that with a smaller pod. As a mediation, last week, we found out that was very successful, and then we're going to move that forward to all fifteen sites, Including the pods at the nutrition center, front office, and the drivers. So, you know, my door is always open For, you know, any suggestions, concerns. Sometimes, you know, I'm not able to follow up as quickly as I'd like to, but I appreciate the support and, you know, reminders If, you know, things haven't been taken care of, which sometimes I think they have been, but maybe haven't, so.
So, the definition is relationships, Trustee Christians, and that's what we're putting our focus on for the remainder of the year.
Yes, and then one more thing. You know, they, they work hard. I've seen it. I mean, I've been there alone with them until, you know.
No questions, sir.
Okay, that's, that's question is Breaks, do they get the breaks? Or do they work straight through?
Our, our staff, whether across the, or across the food service operations, we have breaks scheduled, fifteen-minute break, thirty-minute breaks Throughout the day, and then if, you know, there's certain circumstances where, you know, people are tired, You know, we do allow them to sit down, you know, take a break. And be as flexible as, you know, we're able to, you know, during this, this time At all times.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And now we're going to jump back to the regular order for the meeting. So, Mrs. Reckler?
Thank you. So I do hope you'll give us a chance to give thanks at the end, but right now, I'm just going to ask my question. I think it's been answered. I just want to make sure, Ms. Diaz came to us just a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to ensure that The progress is being, you feel progress is being made when you addressed us last, and that's all. Thank you.
It, it has. I do feel that, I feel the frustration of the members that I represent every single day. So I do feel as though sometimes the progress is a little bit slower than I would like. I mentioned that we have had ample space to voice our opinions, but have seen sort of lack of progress on some specific areas, And that can be discouraging for workers. I also think that there's just an inherent power dynamic when you have a title like supervisor or manager or director, so people are Intimidated and easily disillusioned if they don't see their concern that they so bravely voiced be resolved immediately. So I would say that it's a work in progress. I would say that this board's Specific attention to this item is encouraging some of that progress, so I thank you for it. And I encourage you to keep checking in on us, please.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation to all of you. This question is for both Ms. Jellison and Ms. Diaz. Is there anything that hasn't been mentioned that you would like to advocate with us To provide to your department and to your workers?
Oh, my goodness, where to start? I think that, you know, people have been eagerly watching developments in neighboring cities. I know that San Jose, for example, just passed hazard pay for essential workers. Of course, those are only applicable for private corporations that amass tons of wealth in any given year. Very different situation than the school district, so I appreciate that, but Again, I'd be remiss if I did not bring that up, that folks are consistently asking for some sort of Financial recognition of the fact that they're putting their health on the line every single day. Beyond that, as I said earlier, With other companies and with other employers that Teamsters represent, we have partnered to advocate The governor to allocate vaccines for specific sectors, for specific workers. I would be so proud To co-author a letter with you all to advocate for vaccines for essential workers for your district. So let's get creative about how we can pull our collective leverage, so that we can Start caring for folks and making sure that schools are safe for when kids come back.
Thank you. And Ms. Jellison, any?
Support, but also being able to protect our, you know, essential workers and all of the district staff With vaccines, I would, you know, do whatever it takes to help that endeavor, and, you know, appreciate the board's support. If there's, you know, anything that we haven't addressed that you might think of, I'm open at any time for Being back.
Thank you. President Phillips asked me another question.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smith votes.
So I do have a couple of questions. How many outbreaks have we had since March 2020? I'm looking for a number.
And I'm not sure if Marcy's on with the exact number of outbreaks. We have had several incidents Within our nutrition services pods. And I don't have the exact number. We'll have to provide that through a Friday letter unless she has that. But it has been, wait, she's coming on right now.
So I think it's important to define what an outbreak is. So, Cal OSHA Workers Comp defines an outbreak of four or more in one area within two-week period of time. So is that your question about that kind of outbreak?
And give me that number, and you can also give me the number of just how many people in food services have since March 2020 Had gotten COVID, so I can take both numbers.
So I think there's just been one or two outbreaks of four or more within a two-week period of time. And then I will need to get back about food services. I mean, we have the general numbers, but I'd have to get back for food services individually.
Okay, and then my next question is, how many workers showed up to the January 22nd meeting? How many people showed up to that?
It was the full department.
Yeah, we had more than a hundred and fifty individuals on that Zoom call.
Okay.
Everybody present.
All right, and then the last one is, when you are talking about reopening in that task force, do we have Food service workers and our CSOs at that table to decide and to show and to give their opinion and their Knowledge and expertise about what school will look like with food distribution?
Any final plans will include the voice of the workers that need to be part of that.
And then lastly, how often is staff going out checking these sites and making sure that everything that was supposed to be out of sight is out of sight? From rain gear to pallet jacks, to everything that you're, the hand sanitizing, the spray bottles, how often is staff going out and making sure that this is done?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Oh, food service supervisors and operations assistants are going out daily to check in with all the sites to make sure that All their needs are met with, then the food service department.
That's all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Ms. Emiliano, do you have any questions? Oh, she's gone.
Homework, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Leon, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any further questions. I just want to thank the Food Service Department for their efforts as we navigate through this challenging time.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. So, next, I don't have any questions. We are going to move to public comment On this particular item. Going once, going twice, gone. We have one person, which is Gabrielle Micalletti.
Okay, Gabrielle Micalletti, you may unmute and begin your comment.
Hey, so as an educator, I wanted to give a huge thank you to Veronica and Teamsters because If we reference Maslow's hierarchy of needs, more than anything, people need to be fed and have safe housing. So Teamsters are the people who are making that food support happen, and they make all these basic needs happen despite the risk of COVID-19 That they've faced and suffered from, from what we've heard. I can't ask my students to concentrate if they haven't been fed. Without these workers, our schools would fall apart. I have nothing but respect and appreciation. I have nothing but respect and appreciation for everything members of Teamsters do for us. And I hope they're receiving the PPE, the breaks, and everything else they need and deserve as an integral part of our staff to keep this district running and educating students.
That concludes comments for this item.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to discussion. I do want to remind the board that we have two more items that we have to deal with. But this is a time for discussion. So, again, this was Mr. Christians' item. So, we are going to begin with him.
All right, thank you, President Phillips. Just to continue to echo that we had, you know, continue to make sure that you, the, you reaching out to the workers, making sure the workers are feeling appreciate of all the work they do. They go day in, day out, and making sure that the community is served. So, so we, we can't overlook our workers because they valuable. And, and we just got to make sure that we, we give a round of applause to the cafeteria workers and the safety, the safety team that helped bring all this together.
Thank you very much, sir. Mrs. Reckler.
Thank you, President Phillips. Point of order. Do we extend our meeting at ten or at ten thirty?
We're, we're fine.
We're fine. Thank you. No, no, no comment. Just a humongous thank you to Ms. Diaz, Ms. Jellison, Dr. Wold, all the food service workers. I mean, this has been a immense lift. And the, the, all of West County appreciates it. And, you know, it's, it's, it's just been tremendous. So, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips. Yeah, I just wanted to also echo just my thanks to you, Ms. Jellison, to the whole department, to Teamsters. You know, I think that you all are doing such miracle work right now. All of our CSOS, our nurses, our yard supervisors, every food service employee, our substitutes, our yard supervisors, like I mentioned, like, you're all incredible. You all deserve so much recognition. We see you, we'll continue to support you. Ms. Jellison, whatever you need. Ms. Diaz, please contact us. We'll continue to support you in whatever way we can. All of us, staff included too. I know Mr. Duffy and Dr. Wold obviously really want and care about all of our employees. But, you know, you're all on the front lines and you all deserve whatever you need in order to make this happen. Because as my colleagues have mentioned, you are providing the most essential need for our students. And I see it. And I hear the stories. I hear the stories about nutrition workers walking miles to someone's home to deliver a pack, a pack of food because the family couldn't leave their house that day. Or, you know, I see it every time I drive in front of one of our high schools and the incredible work they're doing in the rain or in the sun, or whatever it takes. So, I just want to say a huge thank you for all of your work.
Thank you very much, sir. Mrs. Smith.
Just want to make it very clear that our employees are paramount to everything working. So, they have to be treated with dignity, respect, and complete understanding of the job that they do. And that's every employee that's in West Contra Costa Unified School District. That's from teachers down to our CSOS and our cafeteria workers and everyone in between. So, if there's anything that we need to do, it is to not only make people not only say their value, but feel valued and feel heard and understand that there's no power dynamic here. Everyone that serves these children serves these children. So, everyone has an equal right to have a safe working environment, a heard voice, and a protected working environment. So, I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page with that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Leon, do you have a, a comment?
Yes, I just want to reiterate the, the thanks the other board members have given. And I just have a great sense of gratitude for the work you've all done. So, thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. I too would like to thank Mr. Christian for pushing for this presentation. I'd like to thank the food service workers for everything that they've done and all of the other support staff who helped as well. And, you know, I treat people right. I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it's really that simple. Treat people right. It doesn't mean that, you know, everybody gets what they want every time, but it does mean you treat people right. And so, Ms. Diaz, you're out there, food service workers out there, all of our, our employees, you know, know that the board is responsive. And if we need to set aside time to deal with issues because you're not being treated correctly, we will. So, that said, we are going to close this item out. We are going to move on to F1, which is an action item, approved governmental relations professional services contract with capital advisors. So, this is a recommendation that's coming from the Budget Committee. When the time comes, Mrs. Reckler, I'm going to tee you up. But right now, I'm going to ask for a very brief presentation from staff.
So, I'll, I'll go very quickly. We have talked previously about investments, about advocacy. And right now, the, the term advocacy is super important. Today, if you are a member of AXA, you've got to call for action to talk about what the governor's doing in reopening, to make sure the legislature has all of the facts of what you're looking at. We are looking at the ability for West Contra Costa. We have unique needs. We need to have a voice in what is happening in Sacramento. And so, we brought forward the presentation. In previous years, we brought it to the Facilities Committee to really have capital advisors be our boots on the ground to help let us know when things are coming that's going to be in the wrong direction for our district, but also help us as we define our priorities to try to craft legislation and flexibility that will make a difference for our kids. And so, we're recommending we try this contract out. We have a one month opt out anytime. But we believe that this is, the time is right and the time is now to make a difference for our kids.
Thank you so much. We are going to do questions. Just kind of as a general thing, when these items come out of the committees, presumably, the committee members asked questions in their committee, right? So, we won't kind of redo that here. But when we get to discussion, Mrs. Reckler, that's when I'm going to kind of tee you up for your recommendation because you're the chair of the committee that this is coming from, okay? So, questions, but I will start in the order. Mrs. Reckler, do you have any questions about your item?
I do. And in full transparency, it came forward in a way I wasn't expecting. So, I was expecting something else. So, let's just feel through how this goes. But how can we attach a expected outcome and expected dollars to this item?
So.
Do you have any feeling about how we're going to?
With advocacy, it ultimately is about, are you able to get your voice heard towards legislation and policy that's going to make a difference for you? By law, advocates and lobbyists cannot attach a dollar amount to any contract that they do from an evaluation standpoint because that becomes a conflict of interest. However, what the board would hold is expectations for what type of information you're getting, what type of access you're getting, whether or not there are bills that move forward that are ones that you wanted to see sponsored. It, it comes down to having that influence and being able to use it when the time is right. And that's where they help to really craft, this is the time and you have the story that helps pitch it. So, it, it's fuzzy, but it's not. You will know whether you're getting results based on what starts to come from Sacramento and the federal government.
So, can you tell me then how the expectation is going to be formulated and communicated and measured? What, what, how, how do you envision this process?
So, once you have somebody under contract, one, you get information on a very regular basis. Sometimes it's weekly. Sometimes it's more than weekly during certain seasons. That information comes directly to staff. It gets produced to the board. You then, depending on what the issue is, there may be a call to action. Hey, in real time, hey, we need you in Sacramento tomorrow because you've got the right voice. You're going to be able to help turn that around. So, what you'll see is, as we start becoming more in person, we will be out directly getting in front of legislation, trying to get things moving for public education. Because here, here's the plain and simple fact, public education is not adequately funded. The story needs to be told. And we have the people that can tell that story if we're put in the right rooms.
And then, the contract does say that the communication is going to the superintendent, which is fine. But how then is the board going to get keyed into what's going on?
So, it comes through several ways. We obviously produce a Friday letter, which gives very specific information. But I've worked with advocates in previous districts. We directly bring the board in through either the committee or through actual, it's time to go to Sacramento. We need two board members and a PTA person. Let's go. So, many times, that's what you'll start seeing is direct connection where we bring and request board members to participate in activities.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but we are going to move on to Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips. I have one question, Dr. Wold. What will we get from this that we can't get from one of our partners already, like CSBA, CTA, PTA, or our community organizations?
Each of those organizations is going to take a position that's beneficial for the majority. For example, in the release of ESSER dollars this previous year, the Federal Cares Act, there was a debate whether it should be given per pupil or based on unduplicated count. CSBA and others came out and said per pupil because that gives everybody an equal amount. For us in West Contra, we wanted it to be unduplicated count because in that case, we get a better percentage because we have more need to serve students. The advocacy would ensure that when something like that is happening behind the scenes, which happens a lot of times, they would say, this is the time to have your voice and be watching out for us, which is different than a CSBA or an AXA or a CTA where they're watching out for the collective. So, there's sometimes where there are going to be winners and losers in a decision. And we want to be on the right side of that. And they help us to do that.
Thank you. That's it, President Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Next, we're going to go to Mr. Christian. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one question. Thank you, President Phillips. And that one question would be like the lobbyists. So, those who would go to Sacramento would help fight to bring resources back to our district?
Correct. That's the goal. And as we can, if we can craft individual legislation for us that benefits us, it may benefit other districts like us, but benefits us. That's where we want to put our focus. And then, they help us to build that coalition where you then instantly get eight or nine districts that have the same need. And that becomes that critical mass to get that legislation passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smith. Any questions?
So, my question is, who in this group is a classroom teacher, a classified person, a parent, N W C C U S D, or a West Contra Costa Unified School District employee? That, you said that they go to tell our story. No one knows our story better than us.
So, that's where they identify, here's the issue. And then, we bring, they help us identify, you know what? We need a teacher right now. Or we need one of your food service people to talk about this. Or we need that. And they will help us identify the right person or classification within our organization to go to do that story. I've brought teachers with me before when I've done this. I've brought bus drivers when I had busing issues. So, each time, it depends, I've brought parents where we've flown up to Sacramento in the past, working with a different ad, advocacy group.
So, my last question is, you said you've done this before, right?
Yes.
Cool. You already work for us. Great. Thanks.
Mr. Leon, any, any questions?
Oh, no, I do not have any questions.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Going once, going twice? Gabrielle?
One hand goes.
You made it. All right, you're up.
All right, Gabrielle Micalletti.
Hello again. I am Gabrielle Micalletti. I'm a teacher at Verdi Elementary. And I am a representative of UTR as the elementary director. And when I listen to these discussions, I'm really curious what the return on investment is with these groups. To echo what trustee Smith Folds was just asking, like, who knows better for our students than what the educators, other staff in our district, and what our parents know? These are the people super involved with what is happening. As someone who works really hard to organize educators and families within our district, I'm kind of wondering, why are we paying this amount of money to people in Sacramento? I understand they have connections, but are we paying for anything beyond the connections? Or is there something we could be doing with the manpower that we have within this district? Because we know our students, we care about our students, we want the best for them. So, as someone who's watched the budget cuts of this district, which were extremely painful, as someone who's watched everything cut from my students, except for literally myself, what are we doing to make sure that we're not just paying money to people out here? And, you know, in Sacramento, saying that they'll do things for us, where do we see the data that they are actually making a difference for our students? Thank you.
Thank you so very much, ma'am. So, we are going to move on to more discussion right now. And so, I am asking for a motion to approve this contract.
President Phillips, I would like to make a motion not to approve this contract.
So, you, you can. Another way for that to work is for just nobody to make a motion, right? So, yeah, like if everybody's just silent, right? Like, that's another way to do it. So, is there a motion to approve this contract?
I'm going to move to approve the contract.
And I will second that motion. So, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this contract? We are going to begin with Mrs. Reckler.
So, I agree that this is squishy. And I talked a lot about this in the Budget Committee, for sure. I don't want to be, you know, a writer on somebody else's bill. I mean, I was very clear in the points that I made there. However, I think it's something to try. It's really very low cost. It's $3,000 a month with a thirty day council. So, we can get out of it very quickly. It's really not a lot of money. And the truth is that you do need somebody in the room when these discussions are going on. And even though all of us have been involved in this legislative process, and trustee Gonzalez Hoy has, have done this together, the fact is, is that you need to be there, boots on the ground, when these things are being decided. And we don't have the time, the space, or the energy to do that. And I've certainly gone up to Sacramento a number of times, being called and just being like, all right, this is your day. This is the hearing. This is what, you know, and you're guided through it. This is what they're talking about. This is where you have the opportunity to influence the legislation. And they will call a parent, a teacher, a classified person, you know, like super, I know Superintendent Duffy has gone for certain things. So, you, you will get that opportunity. I mean, I fully agree that this is just really squishy. But I think it's worth a try. It really is not, it, it, it is really not a lot of money. And we, I think we will be able to figure out cost savings as we get into this or what he's generating for us. I mean, I am a little disappointed that I, he should. I mean, I am a little disappointed that I, he should know, we should be able to find out. Okay, for a district our size, this is what I've gotten for them. He should be able to figure that out. This guy's a businessman as well. But we don't have that right now. We do have to hold hands and make a leap of faith and, and, you know, and take some chances here, but I, you know, I think it's worth it. We have to think differently. You know, we have to, you know, think about things just a little bit different. If we're going to do it now is the time, because bills are created now until April, I think, or something. So this is our window and try. And that's my pitch. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reckler. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, you're next.
Thank you, President Phillips. You know, I almost want to change my mindset just because of trustee Reckler and I admire her so much and her advocacy. So please, don't misunderstand what I'm about to say for not doing, doing that already. But I just, I, I do feel like it's a waste of money. I just don't feel like I can back it up to the community for us to spend $3,000 a month. I know it's not much in the overall number of our $360 million budget. But every dollar counts right now and I don't, I don't feel like I can, I can back up taking a flyer for us to spend that money. I would prefer to spend $10,000 and release 50 employees to go and advocate for something we need in Sacramento one day. Right? Or use some of our partnerships with CSBA and others to advocate for what we need. We hear what happens in Sacramento all the time. We hear about it right away. So we can always, you know, react to whatever's happening in Sacramento. I just don't see a direct link to our community and I just don't know if, if what they're saying is going to ultimately happen. It's, that's why I'm ultimately going to vote no tonight. I just don't feel like I can back up using any dollar for something I don't trust. And, and I don't see a return already, or that, that I see like we can do ourselves. So thank you and, and I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. Next is Mr. Christian.
Uh, thank you, President Phillips. You know, I'm, you know, just, no, just thinking on, you know, and, you know, on the resources and the monies, you know, you know, I don't want to waste no money or anything of that magnitude. But you know, it, it would be nice if we had, you know, people that we know that could, you know, go on our, you know, that, that's being sent to go in that, to go to Sacramento. I just got to think on this. Thank you.
No problem, sir. Thank you very much. Mrs. Smith Folds.
Thank you. Dr. World, you said this is fuzzy. That was a quote. You said this, the, it's fuzzy when trustee Reckler was talking about the matrix to trying to figure out what's happening. Let me tell you what's not fuzzy. Veronica's saying that she needs more people. Take the $3,000 and get some more people in food services. $3,000 times 12 months, that's $36,000. You the money man. Multiply that times four years, that's $144,000. Let's take this money and do the advocacy that's right now. We just had two advocates come to us and tell us what we need in our district right now. If we have this three grand to put out, then we can put it in. So instead of putting it out to the lobbyists, let's put it in to the people who just told us what they need. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Leon? Do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments on this issue.
Okay. So I just want to say that I agree with Mrs. Reckler. The multiplication that we're doing is the wrong multiplication, right? So it's not, in my opinion, $3,000 a month. And then we put it over here. It's $3,000 a month that we put to work. And then that is multiplied by what we're able to get out of the investment that we made. So I'll give you an example. I, you guys know I'm a lawyer. I read through statutes. I read statutes that were designed specifically for Los Angeles Unified School District. Like you could literally go into that code and see something that was carved out for them and it doesn't apply to anybody else. And that's because they have the foresight to actually send an advocate to the legislature to get what they needed for themselves. So if we're trying to do that here, right? If we're trying to increase resources because the food service workers need something, or we're trying to increase resources because some things needed in the classroom, right? Well, one way to do that is to just, you know, take the $3,000 and give it and, and hope, hope that it covers as much as it possibly can. Another way to do it is to take that $3,000 and turn it into $30,000. Because we actually took that money to advocate for something that we needed for our larger community. Not that everybody here is, is, is not talented, because everybody here is. But and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I don't think anybody that's on this dais right now, or in the Zoom is what I should say, has the time and the capacity and the space to run an advocacy campaign year round on behalf of the district. And if we are pretending that we do, that's all we're doing is we're pretending. That's why it hasn't happened thus far. You know, it's, I look at it like it's a car, right? And this car is what we're going to get in to, to take us to Sacramento. We are going to go, we're going to be there. But the idea that, you know, we're just going to do it on our own. If that was the case, it would have happened a long time ago. So I do support what Mrs. Reckler is saying. I do hope that folks vote for this and if it doesn't work out, we won't, we'll stop it. There's a 30-day out. But to not try knowing that we need additional resources. You know, it's funny, if you, some of you would look at the last board meetings, for the last board. People would, trustees would come in and just talk about how Sacramento needs to do this, and Sacramento needs to do that. Sacramento's not doing enough for us. We've all heard those statements. Well, now we're trying to figure out how to go to Sacramento and get what we need and people are saying, no. We can't have it both ways. We can't complain that they don't produce in Sacramento. And then when the Budget Committee makes a recommendation that we put some resources up there to get it, we say no. So we can't have it both ways. I'm done. I made my comments. And we're on to the vote. So Mrs. Reckler, you're beginning. Reckler, your vote is?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez Hoi, your vote is?
Gonzalez Hoi, no.
Christian, your vote is?
No.
No. Okay. Smith Folds, your vote is?
Uh, Smith Folds is, uh, no.
And Leon, your vote is?
I would like to abstain.
Abstain. Phillips' vote is yes and the motion fails. It is 10:25. We have one item left to go. And I think, Mr. Duffy, it's an item that could come back, right? Okay, so we'll bring that item back.
Yeah.
I saw Mr. Wool not his head. So we're going to move on to comments from the board. Mrs. Reckler?
Yes, hi, thank you. Okay, so comments and future agenda items. Okay, so future agenda items. Presentation on Hewlett Foundation Deeper Learning. Project I worked on way back when. I'd love a follow-up. This may go to the academic committee, but a presentation on teacher recruitment and retention. I can email in some other comments. And then um, my budget meeting of February 26th will be rescheduled to March 5th. And I'm going to steal trustee Gonzalez Hoi's thunder. Charter meeting is moving to March 22nd. And then I wanted to give a couple of shout-outs to Tiffany Zhang at Madera, who won the spelling bee. And she will now move on to the Contra Costa County Spelling Bee. So congratulations to her. And then to the L Street High School Speech Team, which just completed their third competition. They are actually competing in the virtual space. Brought home a number of awards. Fourth place, Milo Campbell, varsity humorous interpretation. Fourth place, Teresa Roberts for Varsity International X-Temp. And then we got a second place, Stella Adler in Varsity Expository. First place, Isa Chaplin for novice dramatic interpretation. And first place to Rosalie Zuckerman in Varsity Dramatic Interpretation. So that was quite a, quite a medal garnering there. And that, I believe, is it for the evening. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to ask for a quick motion, just to extend this meeting by 15 minutes, so we can, everybody can make their comments. Can I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And Christian?
Christian, yes.
And Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Leon?
Leon, yes.
And Phillips is a yes. So we're extending just by 15 minutes and this is solely to finish what we're doing right now. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Phillips, and for extending. I want to start just by thanking our amazing student trustee that is still here and same with Ms. Emiliano for, for joining our board. I'm so happy you are here. I, I also, trustee Reckler already mentioned it, but we are canceling our charter committee meeting this month. But we are doing it in March 22nd. It's going to be a longer meeting so we can fit all the work that we needed to do. I also want to thank Mr. McGee and his office for all the work they're doing this month for, to celebrate African-American Month. They're doing, just doing an incredible job. I've seen a couple of their presentations and it's, it's been wonderful. So I wanted to say thank you to them. I really love the idea of us doing a little bit more advocacy when it comes to the vaccination. President Phillips, I appreciated the letter you put out with the other presidents throughout the county. Maybe we can do one with the other unions, with our unions as well, maybe through solutions. Maybe we can ask them if they'd be willing to co-sign a letter that we consent with all of us and our unions and partners to put a little more pressure on the county to ensure that educational workers get priority with the vaccination. I did want to comment real quick. I forgot about when we were coming to the food service presentation. Ms. Diaz mentioned about leave, sending them home if there's no work. Mr. Duffy, I hope that we can just send them home if there's no work and if their office staff members who can just do work from home, that we can do that. Because I, I agree. I mean, that's a simple ask that I think would help. And lastly, but not least, I just wanted to wish everybody a, a safe and, and happy February winter ski week, whatever we call it nowadays. I know all of our employees truly need a break, but I also know that our, our students and families are going to be a week without seeing their teachers and, and staff. So I know it'll be tough, but you know, I, I want to thank all of our workers for the work that they do on a everyday basis, which I know is not easy. But of course, our students and families to have a safe week without much traveling. And also to your colleagues and, and staff, I hope that you have a good week off. Thank you. That was my last comment.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Christian?
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. I just wanted to say, we have the safety, District Safety Committee meetings, which is the first Monday of each month. And we want to make sure that everybody, you know, if you're able to attend to be part of that, that we love to have you part of those meetings. Also, I want to thank new, uh, new board trustees, our students and for being with us and, and being part of, 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 of here on the daisies. And I just wanted to say that we had to continue to build as a district and continue to improve and, and making sure that we do all the things right. And, and also, I just wanted to just continue to say is that we still, we have a long ways to go, but we're going to, we're going to make it better. And, and that's pretty much. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith Folds?
I just want to thank everybody for the hard work that they do here at the board and all the hard work that's done behind the scenes and all the hard work that our teachers and our parents and our staff, hard work that they do every day. This is not easy. It's not easy being up here making decisions. It's not easy. Teaching is not easy. Parenting during a pandemic, all of this, we need to give each other grace and give each other the support and the love that we need. I want to thank the student trustees. This is your first of many to come. It's a lot. It's a lot of information coming to you at one time. There's a lot of personalities to get to know. There's, it's just a lot. We've only been in it like less than 60 days. It's a lot. So just be gentle with yourself. Take your self-care. Know that, you know, when you, when it's time to do a board meeting, you may have to say, you know, mom, dad, whatever. Nobody talk to me. I need a break. That's what I tell my children. Nobody talk to me. I'm about to, I'm about to go sit here for a couple hours. So just be gentle with yourself. I want us all to continue to work together and do the best we can to be the best we can. So I appreciate the audience. I appreciate the public and I appreciate all the work that we do as a board. Thank you. That's it.
And Mr. Leon?
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity for me to participate and learn throughout this meeting. And I greatly appreciate this experience. So thank you to, to you all.
All right. I, we actually, there was a lot of information tonight. A whole lot of information about a whole lot of different things. So I do want to thank everybody for working through this tonight. I want to congratulate Mr. Leon and Ms. Emiliano on finishing their first meeting. Mr. Christian, please remember to get with our student trustees because you're their assigned at board person advisor. We want to make sure that they have an easy, as easy a time as they can, at least as far as, you know, getting acclimated and whatnot to this new role is concerned. So I do want to thank everybody who called in. I want to thank staff for the time that they spent on this meeting. And I want to thank the board for working through a lot tonight because you guys did and you did a good job. That concludes board comments. So the next thing I want to go to is item H. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on February 22nd, starting at 6:00 PM. That's another study session on COVID-19 in schools. Then on February 24th, we have a regular board meeting, which starts at the regular time. And then on February 26th, we have another board meeting, which is actually a listening session. And the purpose, you'll get more information about all of this, but the purpose of the listening session is to give our community a chance to speak directly to the board about its concerns and its thoughts around COVID-19 in schools. So we're going to get a good night's sleep the night before, so we're fresh and able to pay close attention to what everybody's saying. But please put that on your calendar, both of these sessions. The one on the 22nd is going to start at 6:00. And then the one on the 26th, that's going to start, Friday the 26th, that's going to start at 6 o'clock as well, okay? And this is, you know, your opportunity on the 26th to really call in and let us know what you think, because we want to hear it. That said, we're going to move on to item I, which is adjournment. We will be adjourning at 10:38 this evening and we will see you next time. You all have a blessed night, okay? Bye-bye.